Being six o'clock on April 10th, I'll call the Board of Select meeting to order. And just a reminder that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. Thank you. Jesse, you're on the agenda. Let me just find that. I'm going to go out of order so we can get you out of here right away.
I think there's only one thing you need to sign.
So as the Board will recall, there was a conversation at our last meeting. It was a request from Jesse, or it was the Perrigo family to rent the Centennial Grove Cottage on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00, 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And I think at the time, we wanted to get a number of person count in a specific, a hard date, and that has come back to us. I think that conceptually, we were fine with it. So is there any discussion on that agenda item?
What was the number of people?
So it was 50 to 75.
Okay. Yeah, no?
No questions. So I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the request to rent the Centennial Grove Cottage. And I'm being specific that it's the cottage, because as you know, the rest of the Grove is under construction, so we're being very careful not to rent that, the facility itself, out at this time. So to rent the Centennial Grove Cottage on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., as well as to sign the parking pass that allows non-residents to park for the day.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set. You can stay with us, or you can leave. Brendan, do you want to? Does it make sense for you to do the report first?
Sure, I'll start my report. The first item on there has to do with the Centennial Grove restroom project. As you know, we are not only have replaced, and they're continuing to work on it, the Folsom Pavilion. There is a plan and funding in place to have a restroom facility that will be served by a tight tank system. In your packages, you have a representation of what that is proposed to look like. Right now, the proposal is to go with a post and beam type building that will match the style of the pavilion. And so I wanted to get the Board's conceptual okay on moving forward toward that design so that we could have our volunteer coordinator work toward getting final designs and actually put that lumber into production. As you know, we're getting donated raw lumber that gets milled elsewhere, and once you're okay with the design, that raw material would go up to the mill.
So is there a cost around this? I mean, it's a beautiful building, but is there a cost?
Yes. So the materials are going to be expensive, and the town meeting approved a total of $275,000 for this building. In addition, there is a state earmark, which did come in at $75,000, but it is now $37,500 because the governor cut a lot of the earmarks in half. And so that's the budget for the project, and even with volunteer labor, it's going to cost.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, by the time you put in a full tight tank system with an alarm.
Oh, right.
Which has got electrical components, and then you buy all of the really higher-end commercial plumbing fixtures, it's going, yeah, sure, we're going to be within budget, but yes, there's a full budget for it. It would cost a lot more if we were going to stick, build it without volunteer labor. And so really, what's before the Board is, are you okay with conceptually this post and beam motif, which is what really the Board did when the pavilion was being discussed? And then after that, the team takes over and gets it done.
Alva, did you have questions?
How do we ensure that it doesn't go over the 270, which was confirmed at the town?
Well, we did what the pavilion is. Fortunately, when we hit a snag and we think we're going to have a budget implication, we've just pulled in additional people who have been willing to come in and volunteer their time to make sure that we don't go over budget. That's the type of thing that's happening with this project, and our coordinator, Dan Mayer, is, has been committed to that, and I'm sure he'll commit for the second building, that we'll do more of the same.
And that's great. For future, we need to look at what we are charging for use of the area so that we make sure we have some type of buffer when things break down.
Yes, and we, when we did apply for the grant that was going to help defray the cost of the pavilion project, we had to do an entire business plan for that grant, and so that's actually work that was not wasted, and we still have that, and we're going to pull that out when it's time to rent the facility, because we actually have a business plan.
Okay, great.
Brendan, what do you think we're saving by having Dan and you and other volunteers?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, multiple hundreds.
Yeah, when you look at the pavilion, that was, $100,000 was approved, and then $75,000 more was approved. So that's 175. And then we got a state earmark, a different one at the time, for 75 more, and got the building done. Now, I can tell you, a number of years ago, when we looked at either repairing the Folsom Pavilion, the old one in place, or taking it down and replacing it in kind, the public bid estimate with prevailing wage came in over $500,000.
In G and R Construction, more recently, actually gave us kind of a rough estimate without going through the specs and the sheets and just looking in it for a replacement in kind, it was 750.
Yeah.
So that was even more recent.
So for the town's investment of the 175, I think is what we have, you're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars. The reason that there's more money involved in the restroom, which is a smaller building, is because it has mechanicals.
Yep.
And plumbing, and a lot more electrical.
Tight tank.
Right.
Yeah.
So I think we're in good shape. It wouldn't be that way without the generosity of a lot of people from Essex and from the surrounding communities that have been committed to helping the town with this project.
So my only comment, not a question, just a comment, is that in the drawings, it says crushed stone over six mil poly, and the poly actually goes over the crushed stone. So I'm going to give you my notes to send back to Peter. So that's my only comment back on the architect's plans. If there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the restroom facility design and the commencement of the tight tank work.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Beesie, can I pause you for one second?
Sure, of course.
I am correct in stating that Marty Flood has canceled his appointment before this evening?
He did.
So ladies, I believe you're probably here for the tennis court project, and I don't want you to have to wait if that's why you were here. Marty Flood actually has corresponded with us, and due to...
I can explain.
You want to explain it better? That would be great.
So the nonprofit corporation that Marty heads up has X amount of dollars, I think it's like 60-something thousand dollars, that was raised privately. The Town of Essex put up $50,000 for materials only a couple of years back. So that's about $110,000. In looking at today's pricing, even if it was done, even if the labor was done on the private market without going through prevailing wage, Marty indicated that you, for the money that's available, you'd only be able to get one of the two courts put in place, and actually the area that's there now would be downsized to just one full-size court. The issue, though, is since the money that the town put in was only for materials, we're having a hard time getting a private contractor to say that the town can drop ship the materials, which may not even amount to $50,000 for the one court. And so therefore, there aren't any private contractors that are willing to approach the project in that way. Perhaps if there had been more private money raised and the two-court scenario was still presently before us, the amount of money for materials would be appreciably more, and the town would be able to contribute up to that much, and in fact, the nonprofit would probably pay for some materials and all of the labor. Right now, though, as it sits, we don't see a way to proceed based on the amount of money that's in the budget and the restriction that's on the town money. And I can tell you that Marty Flood and the nonprofit, they are thinking of dissolving the nonprofit and returning those donations to the benefactors, which will then bring the situation back to the courts we have that are non-functional. And I think the Board of Public Works will have to determine whether they want to see courts there, or do they turn it into additional parking, or strip out the asphalt and use it for some other recreational use? I don't know. But as we sit here today, I don't see the project happening anytime soon, and I don't even think that the private benefactor is going to hang on to the money. That's the current update on that situation.
So nobody wants to touch a single court? And it's not worth it to them?
They don't want to do a single court and have the town bring in the materials, because the town's amount of money probably exceeds what the cost of materials would be. So now we're eating into what would be their labor part of the job.
Yeah.
Yet we don't have the money to do two courts, which would probably make it work.
Right.
But without the additional private funding, we're kind of stopped on that aspect as well. So it's kind of too much money for one court, not enough money for two courts, and that's if we can find a contractor who will agree to allow the town to procure materials using the state contract and drop ship it. And a lot of contractors are like, mm, we want to run the whole job.
Right. How much was the total for two?
I can only estimate that it would probably be double. So if it's about 110, I think the cost came in at 105.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Call it 110 by the time something happens during construction. We have half the money.
Yeah.
So that was the update. I just didn't want you to have to stay a few... Sure.
So just as, just as an alternative, if Marty wants to shut the, his nonprofit down, I would suggest that we park that money in another nonprofit, such as Cape Anne Community Foundation. It buys the town time, or the committee time, to figure out what they want to do next. And it just seems to me that everybody needs more time to figure out how to do this and do more fundraising, if that's what needs to be done, and to find a place, a suitable place for, one court just doesn't sound like it's going, and one court seems kind of silly to do. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do anything less than two courts. So if we're looking for a place and more money...
So I think, I think that can be done, but it would be entirely up to the current nonprofit to determine whether it wants to move the money somewhere else rather than return it, because it's not town money. We don't have a say in what they do with it.
And Sarah, I think, so Jody Harris, the Chair of the EDC, who was working on the tennis court project, it was my understanding that she reached out to you to see if Marty could transfer the funds to your nonprofit. Did you guys connect on that?
She asked me if I wanted to start up a nonprofit, which I'm not interested in doing.
Okay.
I told her I would suggest that we put the money into Cape Anne Community Foundation, which is, can have a fiduciary responsibility over the funds, hold on to it until we're ready to make a move to build the courts.
Okay. So I think that's something...
So I'll follow up with her and Marty.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay? Go ahead, Beesie.
All right, so the Public Safety Facility Repair Project, that's moving on. Today, the bid documents for this repair of the public safety facility roof and the building envelope, some of the siding issues that were encountered, the bid documents became available. We're starting to see general contractors and sub-bidders pick up bid documents. The site visit is April 24th at 10:00 for the contractors and bidders. Then the sub-bids are due on May 8th. The general bids are due on May 20th, and the Board, I'm sorry, on May 15th, and the Board's meeting of May 20th. At that meeting, the Board will take a look at what bids were received, and hopefully things are favorable to award a contract and move on with the repairs. So I just wanted to let you know where that was. I don't know if anyone has questions at this point. Okay? The lighting project, I don't have a lot of new information to report since the last meeting. I have been working diligently with the Mass DOT. You know that they had the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant that was going to defray a portion of this project. The town has asked the DOT to consider allowing us to expend the balance in that grant account, which at this point in time is a little over $150,000, and put that toward the custom lighting elements that we have already purchased and that are non-returnable. Today, they asked a lot of very detailed questions. They have not said no, and so we're waiting for them to get back to us with an answer on that. It would be, it remains my hope that if we can get the grant to defray most of the cost of the custom equipment, lighting fixtures, that we could still get some remuneration from the engineering firm, back toward that. We're returning anything that can be returned for credit. In fact, that's now been done, and those things have left Town Hall, and I feel that we'll be able to defray the entire cost and retain ownership of the items, which are going to be stored in a safe, dry storage facility that the town owns.
Did we not want to keep, then, you know, the electrical wire and fuse holes?
So the way I feel about that is, when you store wire, which has a soy-based casing...
Yeah.
It attracts rodents, and I'm not really interested, because although it's a good dry storage facility, we may not have a rodent-free...
Yeah.
Mouse-free facility. And it's really not the lion's share of the money, anyway.
Right.
Plus, you don't know whether some new application would require different gauge wiring or a different quantity of different types of wiring.
Yeah, yeah.
With respect to the amount of money that the contractor that was going to be doing the subsurface work has already spent, they've given us a preliminary indication of what they're expecting, but I've already looked at that. I've started to ask questions, and our engineer and our town council will have questions as well to make sure that we only pay what the contract requires and what Mass General Law would require in a situation such as this. So I don't have a number for you there at this point in time. And then with respect to the sidewalks that need patching, you know, another idea that I have, I know I said, you know, you could break out the rest of the flag that was cut and put the plaques in, but we could also probably just hire a mason to do some nice patching work around the small sections that were carefully saw-cut out for a lot less money, put the whole thing back together, and then save the plaques for something else. You know, perhaps if the school gets rebuilt onsite or at a different site, there would be a way to put that in a entrance patio or entrance way. I don't know, but I'm not sure you want to rush to putting those in the sidewalk. It's going to cost you tens of thousands at least, and it may or may not be the best place for it, whereas a mason coming in and just doing 23 patches could be the best. And just something to think about. You don't have to decide now.
Yeah.
It's just another idea.
Yeah, and I guess that for me, that having them at the school, that's a nice idea. Having them on the main street where we have strangers walking down the street every summer would be a better location to really present what our town represents to us. But thinking about it is probably the better thing to do than to just go and plop them in anyway.
There are options, right. There are options, and even if you decide to go with replacing the flag and putting the plaque in the re-poured flag, we may or may not be going with this contractor. We may cut ties and separately procure those services, because I'm not sure we're going to get the best, the best deal in this situation. So that's the update, and I'm, you know, fortunately, things are starting to gel, and I hope to have even more information at your next meeting, which is on April 22nd. Do you have any questions about the project?
The only question I did have is whether or not you also questioned whether or not that we could put those lights elsewhere? Did you? Remember, we were talking, well, can we put them over at the Grove? Can we?
We, well, you could certainly put them over at the Grove, but not based on the bid or the bid price that we had to put it in a specific location downtown. You would probably have to rebid that, and it has its own constraints. We're shallow to bedrock up there, but in those cases, they would probably pin the, cut the foundation and pin it to the ledge. But I don't think we are in a good place. If you wanted to do that, I think we would just go out for new procurement for installation.
How many do we have, like 23, is it, or something?
23 complete, and Mr. Mayor, again, speaking of donated labor and equipment, we have the concrete basis down here at the ball field, which baseball season is starting, boating season is starting. They would have been in the ground now, right? But they were in the way. So he generously sent a piece of equipment, an operator, down and moved them to another location that's out of the way.
That's great.
So we have the bases, we have the poles, and we have the lamps, we have, we have the banner hangers, the flower planters, all of that, the town will own. And wherever the best place is, whether that's at the Centennial Grove, some other place in the downtown to complement a future school project, I don't know, but we're able to store that stuff safely, and I also checked on insuring it, it's only a couple hundred dollars a year, to insure that stuff in the location that it's in, which we're moving forward on right, right now.
Yeah, and the whole problem rose because of MassDOT not having ASBILs for what they did.
Well, okay, the engineer knew that MassDOT didn't have ASBILs, but they went forward with the design anyway and said, actually said, "We don't expect any conflicts if you put the light bases at the back of curb." Unfortunately, the project was replete with conflicts. And I think professionally, what they should have done is said, "Given that we have limited information, we don't recommend that the town purchase, pre-purchase anything until the contractor does some testing." No, that would have been difficult for another reason, because now you do some test digging, and then you wait 16, 18, 20 weeks for the materials.
For the start, yeah.
We felt that we had enough assurance, based on what they said and based on the fact that they pre-studied it, right? There was a technical assistance grant that pre-studied it, and then there was, we hired them, because they already learned about it, we hired them to do a design. Nowhere along the way was the town giving a warning, given a warning that we shouldn't preorder this stuff. In fact, they were complicit in helping us finalize those pre-orders of custom, non-returnable equipment.
So can I ask you, did at any time our DPW reach out to us and say, "No, that's not a good, it's not possible"?
They did not.
Because that was the comment that was, you know, floating around Facebook, and I, and...
What the DPW said as the, first of all, the DPW did know about the project, okay? But since it's on a state highway, they said, "Okay, well, you got a grant, you have an engineer, you're working with the process," and on it went. They became more concerned when they saw the areas that where the bases were going to go get saw cut, and they said, "Are we really going to have the clearance between the edge of the light pole and the back of sidewalk for ADA compliance and for the plow?" And we said at the time, we're going, and we did this, we're going to bring the sidewalk plow out onsite to check clearances before we install any given base. And there were only like three or four, and we did it, it was, I remember the cold day, three or four that were questionable, but even those could be handled with, when we were going to replace the concrete flag, bumping out the sidewalk right in that area within the right-of-way. So the concern that the DPW expressed was, you're going to have proper clearances when this project is over, not, you're definitely going to hit stuff under the ground. That's a different animal, okay? And again, we don't feel like we were prepared well enough by our engineering contractor for them to recommend the phasing that we actually undertook. And in this situation, we have already, and we've confirmed this, we have indicated to our engineering consultant that we may be filing a claim against their professional liability policy, and we have gotten confirmation that they have informed their insurer that we have made this claim. It all depends now on how the, how the funding comes together, whether the grant will pay for it, et cetera, because that's a very different scenario than if we don't get that fund.
Right, yeah.
In the contract language, on page three of the contract language, it was very specific that we were not going to have problems. It was very definitive, which is why we went forward with materials. There was no, yeah, there was absolutely no, in our minds, this project was a slam dunk.
As laypeople, we just were following what our advisor had said, and with them helping us to order the custom stuff, it was just another reason why, yeah, okay, the experts not telling us we're going to have some kind of train wreck here.
Do we know where the utilities are? Does anybody know now?
Well, for the areas that we dug, which were several in a row, and then we skipped and skipped and skipped, we kept going up the line, we kept hitting.
Yeah.
And even, even in a place...
The thought wasn't going to be that the sidewalk would come out, like to avoid those utilities, right? There was never that thought.
No, the whole, it actually says in the contract, in the scope of services, that each base will go back of curb because they were expecting no conflicts in that location. That's after observing the Mass DOT ASBILs.
Yeah.
In hindsight, they probably should have said, "Wait a minute, we're not going to give you a design that says that. We're going to stop you now and tell you you need to do exploration first." None of that happened.
Right.
What happened actually was a statement in the contract that made it seem like that was perfectly, perfectly fine.
Right, yeah.
But this may still be very salvageable, and the town hopefully will end up with valuable lighting equipment that can be used somewhere else for a fraction of its cost, hopefully. And by the time the town actually does use this to buy it again, it's probably going to be $220,000 worth of equipment. So again, I don't have any final answers, and anything could happen still, but right now, we're still not precluded from, from that scenario coming to fruition. So now moving to preliminary town meeting motions. And I want to hand out a revised monetary summary, because the numbers will, oh, that's mine, the numbers will keep getting updated right until we get to town meeting, but... And these numbers are actually the numbers to look at right now. Even the numbers, the figures in the motions are, have been updated, but I didn't want to waste the paper. The current numbers as we know them are on the sheet.
Okay.
In addition, I want to say that we received word today from the Manchester-Essays Regional School District that the debt calculation for what each town owes in fiscal '25, due to some kind of issue with, with how it was calculated or presented, is actually, should be a lower figure. And so Article VI, which handles all the town's debt in one of the subparts of it, will be slightly less. So the error or typo or whatever it was, we're going to get a new statement from the district, was actually to our good, so just want to let you know that. That's going to change a little bit.
So does Article 12 stay the same? Or does that change, too?
That won't, because that is only the operations cost of the Regional School District, okay? The debt is included in Article VI, where we, where we have, if you look at Article VI, and you look at the number at the top, taxation is a certain amount for debt and a certain amount for other, that debt number will come down, which means the top number will come down, which means the overall budget number. We're talking $4,000 or $5,000 here, to the good.
Yeah, something much, yeah.
To the good. I'm just telling you that it's going to change.
Yeah.
And that's the reason. And the motion will read the appropriate number, so that was caught in time. And, you know, worst-case scenario, even if the higher number was read, then the town would just not have parted with all the money. So looking at the motions, Article I, I have down for Ruth. The town report I have down, it's Article II, for Peter. Alva, I have you for the wage and salary scale, and then I have Peter for the elected officials' compensation part of that, or Alva, would you like to read both for consistency?
It doesn't matter. Yeah, I could read both.
I think it makes more sense for consistency. And then, of course, I'll be there, Alva, to explain any questions that come up. Then Ruth with the Town Septic Betterment Fund. Right now, I'm expecting that the Chair of the Finance Committee will... Right now, I'm expecting that the Chair of the Finance Committee will read the general budget Article VI. I've been told now that Nick Ellis will be the reader for all DPW articles. Article VII is indefinitely postponed, and that would be if we needed any money to come out of the sewer enterprise fund to prop up any issues that are apparent with the FY24 budget, and there are none. We always put it on the warrant, because around this time of year, something usually happens. There's a sewer break, there's a, you know. But right now, they're still saying that they're not going to need it. Article VIII is the wastewater enterprise fund budget for FY25, that'll be Nick. And then Article IX indefinitely postponed, because that would be if we needed to do anything with the FY24 water budget. I have to make, when I see Article 10, I see a typo on this monetary summary sheet, that should say FY25. And that'll be Nick, again, that's for the, that's for the water fund for the upcoming fiscal year. You'll notice in the draft motions, I was questioning whether there was a betterment funding source, because we normally have one, but I'm told that the Pond Street water betterments are finally paid off. So there's no source, and there's no expense. And that's, you know, not showing here on the monetary summary. I have Alva down for the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District budget, unless you want me to get, ask the current representative what's preferable there? Tina?
Bob Teal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said Tina for some... Yeah, shall I ask Bob? We just saw him today.
He, he, yeah, I guess he'll still be a member until, because he's not rerunning, right? Didn't I see that he wasn't...
That would go till after town meeting, though.
Yeah, okay, I don't mind.
Want me to check in with him?
Check with him if he wants to.
Then we have, normally, the Chair of the Regional School Committee for Manchester Essex reads the general budget article for the operation of the district. It brings us to the feasibility study article, and I don't know what the board wants to do with that, as far as who you'd like to read that.
Do you have a recommendation?
Do you want to?
No, no, I wasn't even going to say, "Do you want to?" I guess if we want it to be a selectman, certainly, you would probably be the most qualified, in the sense that you've done a school building project in the past. I think we certainly need it to be a member of the community that's respected. And having served on a school building committee makes sense. The other person that I thought that could be great for this, if you didn't want to do it, if we want to keep it at the selectman level, we certainly can. If we didn't want to do that, I was thinking about asking if Annie Cameron wanted to do it, just because she's been part of a school building committee and a Chair of the school committee. And I think that she's going to be the most well-versed in being able to answer the questions that are going to follow this.
That would be a good one.
Yeah. You ask her if she wants to. I'm fine with it either being a select board person or a representative who's been on a school building in the past.
Okay.
Or maybe she wants to do it the other way. I read it and then she answers questions.
She read it in 2016. She read the one for the Memorial School.
Oh, she did.
She did. And I looked up how this article, the motion, went in 2016, and I'm going to shorten this, because even then, we used, we just said, "As shown in the warrant," so she doesn't have to read all this.
Yeah.
So this is going to change to the shortened version. So do you want me to reach out to Annie?
If you wouldn't mind reaching out to Annie, I think that she's probably the most well-versed person, highly respected, you know, she has a lot of school followers. I think she would be the best person. But Alva, like, you also served on a school building committee, so either way, I'm fine with.
Then Articles...
That would be great, easy.
Great. Then Articles 14 through 20, I have Lisa down, these are all the zoning articles, and I'm sure she's going to be giving me names for each of the articles.
They voted at the last planning board meeting that Lisa was actually reading all of them.
She is, okay, so I have it correct. I figured that was just a placeholder, all right.
Don't you have Shelley on number 18?
Shelley just, Shelley felt that it would be best for Lisa, for consistency of the zoning articles, she wanted the presentation to come from the Chair of the Planning Board. And then Shelley is going to get up at that article to be able to answer any of the questions.
Then we have, at Article 21, this would be Nick from the Board of Public Works. Now, all they're doing is they're changing the bag price, not the sticker price, and you can see what their proposal is in that article.
And do we have backing as to why? I mean, I know that 25 cent drop doesn't seem all that great, 20 or 50 cent drop doesn't seem all that great. So do we have backing as to why we decided we can come down, but that's it?
Yeah, I think it's because they're just truing this up, right? At first, it was a educated, educated guess as to how much the tonnage was going to drop, now that we've gone to pay-as-you-throw. And they feel that they have enough data to drop it somewhat, but they want to make sure the trend continues. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
And with respect, so that's for the solid waste and hauling. When it comes down to the operation of the transfer station and recycling, they look at that as the sticker covers that, and I think they looked at that and said, "The costs there for the sticker price that's being charged are more in line," which is why they didn't change, they're not proposing to change the sticker price, only the bag price.
Recycling must have gone up. Do they have a number on that?
I don't have a current number, but it goes up every year, I mean...
No, I mean the amount.
Amount.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. The cost goes up and the amount, so it's, it gets worse, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because, okay, you're not doing as much solid waste, but now you're paying more for recycling.
Right.
For more recycling, at a higher price.
So I'm just wondering if that'll affect, in the not-too-distant future, the sticker price.
I think it might, but right now, it's matched up well enough, is what they're estimating.
And the only other question I had is, okay, so now there's bags out there sitting in stores. Will we have to pay for them based on the 250 or the 475 until they're gone, and then the next pricing? Or, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't want people to go to the store the next day after town meeting and say, "No, this is the wrong price."
What it's saying here is, "Said fees to be effective for bags purchased for the period beginning July 1." So we've never done a change like this. It's a good question. I would say that it would have to be that as of July 1, you go to the store and the price is different. But I will check in and get an answer on that.
Both for the stores and for the public?
Article 22 would be if there was a need for money for more Centennial Grove improvements. At this moment in time, we're not seeing any. Again, we're trying to use the volunteer model that we have, and that's saving so much on labor.
I think we should put Jody Harris in that instead of me, only because then she can stay there to do the next article.
Okay, put Jody in here. And I will verify with Dan Mayer that he feels like he's in good shape, because we have the article, I just...
Yeah.
So you're saying Jody on 22 and 23?
I mean, 22 is just being indefinitely postponed. It's not a big article, but this way, she's already standing at the microphone. She might as well do them back-to-backs, and she's going to do both of these.
They're the same thing.
Right, well, they're both at the Grove, exactly.
Yeah, 23 has to do with getting the actual camera system installed. We're making progress with the devices that are going to make the cameras talk back-to-town all, because I already have all that, and I'm working on that. But it also has money in it for the other end, which is the video server, because that server is already nearing end-of-life, and it runs the camera, records the camera data in and around the public safety facility. By rights, we really need a bigger server with more storage capacity, and they want to move to a less complicated software that doesn't always require software updates that have to be patched before the system will return to normal operation. So I'm still waiting for the estimates on that, and that's why it is not a number. We then have the Community Preservation Fund, which, right now, is not going to involve the Affordable Housing Trust getting any more funding for future projects. They feel as if the trust needs to do the housing production plan, and we're waiting to see if we get a grant to do that before more money goes into the trust. Now, Ruth, do you know whether they approved, there was one other project, and do you know what that was?
I do. So it's the repair of the roof and fascia boards, or the wood trim, at the tomb, the kind of a historic tomb at Spring Street Cemetery, the one that's on the far right, if you're standing on Spring Street, you look all the way over. It has a beautiful slate roof, and it has just kind of the rakeboards and the fascia boards were all kind of rotted with holes. At the time of the meeting, they did not have a quote back from the slate contractor, so they can't do the roof repair. But the price tag on the carpentry, I want to say, don't quote me, I think it was $2,800, but with the contingencies and any sort of, anything else, it was $3,500 that was approved.
All right, so I'll get back with Jay. It was $3,500 even?
It was $3,500 even.
Okay. The next article. Here, we have the opportunity, these AEDs are for the police department. We could have somebody from police who lives at Essex read it, or you could just do it as a selectman.
Well, I think we only have one Essex police officer in the room. Do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it?
I think, yeah, I think a police officer would do it.
I think having Dan do it and putting him in front of all those people will be great.
It's short. Then, how about, Dan, you want to read the Tasers one, too?
I've got it.
On a roll. Then we have Nick Ellis again for the utility pickup truck, which is split between water and sewer free cash retained earnings. Article 28 is, there's no need right now to amend any departmental budgets, so that would be indefinitely postponed. The reserve fund, this will be $50,000 to bring that back to full strength for the end of the fiscal year. We know of no unpaid bills, so that would be indefinitely postponed. And then Article 31 is a petition article that the proponent would probably provide a motion reader for. And that's where I am right now with that.
Looks good.
And then the CDS funding.
So congressionally-directed spending. This is the term for what used to be called, I think, local project funding, something of that sort. And it's basically federal earmarks for projects that would happen in local districts. In this case, we were invited, it was a short fuse, but we were invited to turn something in. And they like to really go after what they would call shovel-ready projects. In this case, since we know that we're going back out to bid for the public water supply well improvements, because our ARPA money is not even enough to do the whole scope, we proposed to put in for an additional, just over $600,000, so that we can get the entire scope done. I have heard back through Congressman Moulton's office, we're also working with the two senators' offices, that this project probably has some traction. And in fact, we've been asked to increase the amount to cover what our next steps would be. Right now, it's looking like our next steps would be the beginning of replacing concrete asbestos, or asbestos concrete, I think they call it, water lines that are in the street. These have a service life that's incredibly long, but if we don't start making progress mile-by-mile on them over the years that come, you're going to get stuck with failing, water breaks, et cetera, for this very brittle line, and have to do it all at once. And so right now, the Department of Public Works and our engineering contractor are working out the details of what we would add to the 628, which would be, you know, so many miles of pipe at X per mile and the engineering involved. And we're going to add that in and get it to the people in Washington, and hopefully, next spring, we'll hear about something that's over $1 million added to our...
So this would be the water, the water well project and adding in the lines?
And adding, starting to add in, nipping away at mile-by-mile the lines.
How many miles is Mike looking?
Don't know the number of miles, but it's in the tens of millions.
Yeah, per mile?
No, all together.
Yeah, yeah.
We, that figure is actually in the master study that we did, but I don't have that in front of me. We did it, it talks about asbestos concrete pipe, there's like 30-something years of service life left on it, and there's so many miles, I don't have that handy, but we do have the figure.
So even our water lines that are on state roads, we would still, those are ours, correct?
Right. Fortunately, with the sewer project, a lot of that got replaced with modern lines when they went through.
Okay.
In some locations, but not in all locations. In fact, as we talked about, when we're talking about the lighting project, there's still an abandoned asbestos concrete line in the Causeway in the downtown area. There's a brand-new line now, we don't have to worry about that old line, but it's going to stay there forever. They like to do abandonment more than they like to do removal, because if it stays intact, it's fine. Once you break it and take it out, it's hazardous waste.
Right, yeah.
So the board needs to consider ratifying the chairman's approval, because the deadline has already passed to get the project in. Now they're asking us to update it, but we did meet the initial deadline.
So I'll entertain a motion to vote to ratify the chairman's signature of the required certification document for the application of the CDS funding.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the police officers, is there anybody else joining us this evening before we meet with Victor? Okay. Then, I'm a little bit early, but I'm going to get us back on track by asking the chief to join us at the microphone, please.
Good evening, all. So I'm here tonight to recommend Officer Victor Munoz to move up from a reserve officer position to a full-time position contingent upon, you know, the police academy, passing all the tests as we always do. I'll give you a little background on Victor. Victor is 30 years of age and currently resides in the city of Lawrence. He is a graduate of Whittier Regional Technical School, class of 2012. In 2020, Victor graduated the Municipal Police Training Committee's Massachusetts Law Enforcement Training Association Basic Reserve Officer Academy. And then he would successfully complete the Municipal Police Training Committee's Approved Bridge Academy on 4/26/23. Victor has been working as a reserve police officer for the Essex Police Department since November of 2020. And although he had minimal law enforcement experience out in the field prior to this, he came to the department with three years' special police officer, security officer experience in a busy hospital environment. Having gained that experience working at Lawrence General Hospital, as well as Boston Medical Center, Victor also has experience working as a supervisor for northeast diversion in Haverhill, which provides individualized and comprehensive residential services to male and female youth ages 12 to 18, as well as their families. Since starting in Essex in late 2020, Victor has proven himself to be an asset to the department. I believe that he has proven himself to be a dependable, valued member of the Essex Police Department, and he works very well with all of his peers. By all accounts, Victor is a team player and will be a welcome addition to the full-time ranks of the department. I respectfully request your support in appointing Victor Munoz to the position of full-time police officer, contingent upon successfully meeting the requirements of the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Essex Police Department.
Thank you, Chief Francis. Victor, would you like to join us at the podium? Does the board have any questions for Mr. Munoz?
I do not.
I do not.
So I just, we don't often get the opportunity to have our police officers in the room with us, and we don't get to say anything nice. We always get, I know for me on this side, I tend to deal with the complaints. So the fact that I have you before me is great for me to actually get to look you in the eye and say that I'm overwhelmed with joy to have, to be able to call you a full-time officer after this vote. You've... You've come to us three and a half years ago, you are highly respected, you're great to work with, wonderful personality, you do an awesome job, and I couldn't be more pleased to be able to make this motion. So, congratulations. We welcome you to Essex with open arms, and I hope that you're with us for a really long time. I will entertain a motion to appoint Victor Munoz to the position of full-time police officer contingent upon drug and medical clearance, quarry clearance, completion of the full-time police academy, and all of the related police department requirements.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Since I have another minute, and I have so many police officers in the room, I also want to comment on just our police department in general. It's not on my agenda, but I'm improvising. The Board of Selectmen doesn't often get the opportunity to commend our department. We, like I said, by the time I hear anything, it's generally a complaint. And in today's climate of policing, it's unfortunate that you guys are constantly under a microscope and that we, and sadly, because everything is confidential and private, which I completely understand, I'm in medicine, I get it, but it doesn't allow for us to ever say, "Great job." So tonight, two things that recently happened that I'm going to bring to the board's attention. We had a couple of weeks ago, there was an accidental discharge of a weapon in Ipswich, I'm sure everyone's heard about that, and you know, I was listening to the scanner, and I heard one of, I heard Sergeant Shamshack, who's in the room with us tonight, obviously listening to radio chatter, and without even a call for mutual aid, or we couldn't hear on my end, he said, "I'm sliding that way," and without hesitation, moved in that vicinity, and luckily, we were fortunate with the outcome, but, great job. Second was, I see Officer Morris in the room, and sadly, I don't have Detective Wee Way with us, but there was a really unfortunate accident in Beverly last week, and it sounds like she's going to pull through, so that's amazing news, but it was our very own Detective Wee Way and Officer Morris that were able to make that arrest. So, awesome job. I don't know if congratulations is the word, but just, I commend you and I appreciate you, and we do acknowledge it, in this room, at this board, and publicly, we're recorded, this is being broadcast, we do respect you, so.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Well, speaking for my department, I'd like to thank you very much for saying that, and I, it makes me very happy to hear, and I have to tell you, I know, and if I don't say it to these guys enough, I have some of the best police officers in this state. They work through some pretty, some tough circumstances, as you know, I mean, with staffing and all that, not to beat a dead horse, but they step up constantly. When we have problems filling shifts and that sort of thing, they get together and they just, now we even have a thing where we kind of do like, it's like a sports draft. We have a bunch of overtime shifts, they get together, they look at it, and they pick the shifts, and these guys are some of the smartest police officers I've ever worked with, and I've been doing this for, I'm in my 29th year, so I personally agree with you, and I want to thank you, and I would like to commend my officers as well. Thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. And I'm guessing you're probably all staying for Nemlik, so feel free to join us, generally we don't see this much blue in one room.
I do.
Yes, you do. So, we're five minutes early, I mean, it's not a hearing, so I feel like we can start if you want to, unless you feel like more people are going to join us.
I'm fine with going now, chief, you could?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm just going to read something real quick. As you know, on Monday, October 23, 2023, Town Administrator Zabricki and I, along with Rockport Police Chief John Horvath, Rockport Town Administrator Mitchell Viera, as well as Manchester Police Chief Todd Fitzgerald, and Town Administrator of Manchester Greg Fetischbeal, met at the Rockport Police Station to discuss the three departments joining the majority of the Essex County Police Departments and becoming members of Nemlik, Nemlik being Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. At the time, we would learn that Nemlik membership has grown to 64 law enforcement agencies from both Middlesex and Essex County, with two associate members, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Department and the Essex County Sheriff's Department. As of today, the membership has again grown with, well, actually, I believe it's going to be official tomorrow, but with the towns of Rockport and Manchester joining, and I believe Topsfield has signed up as well. So at this point, with those departments signing up, we'll be the only department on Cape Ann that's not a part of Nemlik. In October, when we met with retired Middleton Chief James DGN Vittorio, we call him DG because it's much easier, Executive Director of Nemlik, Tinsborough Chief Richard Howe, Second Vice President, and Sudbury Chief Scott Nix, RRT SWAT Control Chief, we discussed the benefits of joining Nemlik for the departments and the towns. We spoke about how it would serve to enhance our response capabilities to a myriad of public safety situations, as well as provide access to services, resources, and specialized training for incidents that may otherwise quickly overwhelm both the staffing resources and financial resources of a small department like ours. We spoke of the pooling of resources and equipment, as well as specialized investigative resources and intelligence sharing that will greatly enhance the effectiveness of a department of our size. With staffing members on, an ongoing concern exacerbated by recruitment and retention challenges, the cost of Nemlik's membership is a relatively cheap insurance plan for an incident that does in fact overwhelm the resources of the department. Excuse me. At a time when law enforcement is increasingly under the microscope, being members of Nemlik, attending regular meetings, training exercises, as well as information sharing promotes a professional, more unified approach to any situation which may arise. Membership also promotes opportunities for professional growth and opportunity for our offices, offering training and topics such as leadership, crisis management, and the latest in police techniques and strategies, which will simultaneously have a positive effect upon officer retention. Simply being able to draw on the many years of experience and expertise of the members is an invaluable commodity in policing today. As you'll note in your packet, the cost to become a member of, membered department of Nemlik is $5,500 per year, payable in July of each year, as well as the required personnel resources of the 10% of the total sworn personnel. For a department the size of ours, the commitment, excuse me, the commitment would be one officer. I've been advised that this requirement may be covered for some time by the chief, myself being on one of the committees as well. The Essex Police Department has already accepted the provisions of Essex County Mutual Aid Agreement under Chapter 40, Paragraph 8G, under Mass. General R., which is one of the requirements of joining Nemlik as required. Note also, the department is already a Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission accredited police department, which is, that's something else they would like us to be, which we are. I know that the members of the Board of Selectmen have questions and concerns that we would like to address, and for that reason, I requested a meeting with the board and Nemlik Executive Board Personnel. It is my hope that your questions and concerns will be answered to your satisfaction, and that the board will consider having the Essex Police Department become members of the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council of Nemlik, otherwise known as Nemlik. Having said that, I would like to introduce the President of Nemlik Executive Board, Andover Police Chief Patrick Keef. This is in and out.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. As the chief said, I'm Pat Keef, I'm the police chief in Andover, and I'm also the president of Nemlik. I'll go through this, briefing tonight is actually, we gave that to Nemlik orientation to, it'd be like sergeants and lieutenants in other departments, so it's not geared to a Board of Selectmen, but if you have any questions at all, please stop me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. So Paul pretty much covered the size of the organization. A little history, it started back in 1963, it was eight original communities, mostly around the Reuben area. They met up monthly, they were going through the same kind of...
Just tell me when you want me to advance.
What's that?
Tell me when you want me to advance, I don't know where...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're doing it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
You can just leave it there for now.
Okay.
They were, they kind of started meeting monthly, and they were figuring out that they all had the same issues as far as crime at that time, a lot of people were moving out of Boston, going up to the suburbs, and so they organized a little bit more, and it went from eight to 22 very quickly, and like Chief Francis says, we're pushing 67 communities. First slide is the mission statement and organization. And then the organization management. In simplest terms, we're a mutual aid organization that assists members of Nemlik in their communities. I'll go in more when we hit the slides, but I'll talk about some of the teams and all that. The biggest thing you have to remember is, we never show up and take over, we just come to assist the chief who's in need, to use any of the resources we have. He makes the decisions, the control chiefs and some of the people in charge will just advise him, but we are never in charge, we're just there to assist the community. So, this slide, organization management, overview responsibilities, executive board, general operation oversight, we represent the member chief's interests, we identify and obtain funding, strategic planning organization and management, we drive organization in accordance with the member priorities, we establish collaborative partnerships, those are with state agencies and federal agencies, and obviously, all the communities in Massachusetts, and we facilitate divisional operations. Next slide. So this is the organizational chart, we all answer to the membership. Below that is the executive board, it goes president, it actually goes past president, president, first vice president, is some of the lists underneath these positions of what they're responsible for, secretary, second vice president, and then treasurer. You'll see up top there, it says Nemlik Foundation, that's a private organization that raises funds to assist us for paying for some of our training that we do. Next slide.
Probably only, what do the dues go to, the 5,500 per community?
The 5,500, the dues that you pay, so that goes to the running administratively?
That flow chart you had there, more or less like the secretary?
Well, it, so, the money, it goes into all the other communities, so we have vehicles that we have for like the different teams, a lot of different equipment, it goes to that, so it goes to the membership, pretty much.
Okay.
And the executive director, no?
And the executive director, yeah, we have an assistant that works part-time as well. So this is the map, as you can see, it's made up of Essex and Middlesex, Middlesex area is mostly northern Middlesex, and there's also two, there's one community right now in Suffolk, but there's two other communities that could join if they wanted, they're pretty good-sized organizations, so they really don't have the need right now. Next slide. So, the current breakdown, the executive board, myself, the president, each position's two-year term, I'll be finishing my term up in December, and the vice president, Chief Tommy Brown, will be taking over from Burling PD, second vice president, if he runs again, he'll be in that position. The treasurer is Chief Nick Sictori from Linfield, secretary is Chief Tom Griffin from Peabody, and there's two member-at-large positions, because the past president that we had, he retired right after he was in the position, and we also had the first vice president resigned, because he was retiring as well, so we made two member-at-large positions. Those two positions would change in January when they vote. Next slide. So these are the control chiefs and some of the units that we have. So the first one is the CISM team, and that, the control chief is Tom Griffin from Peabody, and each team has an assistant control chief, or two control chiefs, and the assistant control chief for that team is Chief Russell Stevens. It's, CISM is critically incident, stress management team, so those are, that's peer-on-peer counseling, so if you have an officer going through, officer or staff going through some, any kind of stress-issued area, any trauma, traumatic incident, you can call this team, they'll send people out to have a sit-down, they'll do a debrief, and then they meet two other times, they kind of just talk people through what they're feeling and how they can get back to doing what they were doing, pretty much. Motor unit, it's Chief Bernard from Littleton, his two assistant control chiefs is Chief Dumas from Raleigh and Chief Furlong from Nahann. The motor unit is usually used for, you know, if they have parades, you can also use them sometimes if you have big events for traffic control and things like that. IMAT team, incident management team, that is headed by Control Chief John Lachey from Beverly, and Chief Scory from Wakefield is the assistant. So that's all of our communications, communications and mostly technology that we use, we have a, I want to say it's 40-foot vehicle, looks kind of like a giant RV, but it's all filled with communications, but you see, on a big incident, we'll roll that vehicle out and it will control the scene. RRT SWAT and negotiations negotiators that falls under this one is Chief Scott Nix from Sudbury, you have Chief Conley from Gloucester, and Chief Rufo from Reuben as the assistant control chiefs. And the last one is STARS, and that is the School Threat Assessment and Response System. That is Chief Shear from Merrimack, and he has Chief Donapoli and Chief Dumas again from Raleigh. So that's any community that would like to have a team come out and visit the schools and see what kind of the threat assessment they can do in the schools, it's also used for, STARS is used an awful lot, it's comprised of police, fire, and school administration, and school counselors, so if, you know, if a school has a sudden death of a faculty member or a student, and the school's having trouble, students having trouble, they can reach out and we get resources to assist that school in that process of healing. Next slide. And these are two of the committees that we have, standards committee, that's Chief David Clark from Reading, Chief McIsaac from Belmont, Chief Noble from Manard, Chief McLean from Lexington, and Chief Dennis King from Marblehead. So, we have certain standards that we follow, more administratively than anything else, and what the standards committee is really geared to is making sure our standards are meeting our mission, and we're not varying from that mission that we have. Finance committee, that's Chief Sictori from Linfield, he has Chief Fowler from Salisbury, Chief Griffin, Scott Dumas, and then Roy Frost and Bill Ricker, and Chief Satelli from Townsend. They control the finances for inside, making sure, they do a strategic plan, they meet monthly as well, making sure that the, all the money is actually going where it is for either for training, equipment, and then they obviously make sure everything is cost-effective at the end of the year. Next slide. So overview responsibility, control chiefs, they're appointed by the executive board, they manage a designated unit, they lay it out to the executive board, facilitate and support unit operations, they provide inter-unit support as well. Membership requirements, so the municipality must have accepted, Chief Francis talked about it, you've already done this, either the Chapter 40, Section 8G, or Chapter 40, Section 4J, which you already did through the Essex County Chiefs. Member agency will execute mutual aid agreement with Nemlik, chiefs must attend monthly membership meetings, currently scattered for second Wednesday of each month, we hold that at the MPTC Linfield Police Academy Building. Member agency shall take all reasonable efforts to become certified and accredited by a recognized accreditation body. And the committee chair is very similar to the control chiefs, most of those bullets are exactly the same. Membership requirements, all member agencies pay dues and assess each year by the executive board, member agency will commit 10% of its personnel resources, total sworn, so... So I believe you have ten officers, chief?
We have ten full-time and...
Yeah, just your full-time, yep. So ten, so it'd be one officer or the equal of one person to be involved in Nemlik. Upon request, member agencies may require to show proof of police liability insurance coverage. Must be actively seeking to enroll in a currently mass accredited, mass certified. So that's, that's, all departments in Nemlik are moving towards accreditation. It could be the certification portion, but they should be moving towards accreditation, full accreditation. So how do we break that down? So we talk about like one officer, one person for the police department. Tier one is the baseline. So that's six credits. So if some communities maintain our vehicles or they house the vehicles, and they could get six credits for that, or they could be members of the foundation or committee member as well. Tier two is a member of STARS or CISM, motors unit or RRT, or a member of the executive board. And the credits go up on that because they're, it's just a little bit more of a commitment at that point. Tier three is the largest commitment. That's a member of the SWAT team, K-9 or IMAT. Anytime a SWAT team is called out, those two other organizations along with negotiators also get called out. Depends on how big of a unit they call out from SWAT. The committee of foundation members can only receive credit for serving on one committee, so you can't double-dip. So a membership grant is what you will receive. Activation procedures, unit membership application, chief's directory, position values, and the membership guide. We receive funding which will be used for necessary training for officers to manage encounters safely and effectively with people with mental health illness, and we're focused on the following. Crisis intervention, obviously, is the biggest one right now. Mental health, first aid, peer support. We deal with best practices in real-life events. School safety, mass shootings, and dealing with post-traumatic stress disorder for law So these are, we, back in January, we had a strategic meeting on where we want to go, see the organization the next five to seven years. And these are some of the core activities that came out of that meeting. Number one, garnering the public trust, equal voice for all members. Doesn't matter how big of a department you are or how small a department, everybody has the same voice. Everything's equal in that part. Resources are safe deployments with other safety as a priority. Excel in the service that we provide. Leader in the field of training. Service that a community can't supervise without an organization that others model themselves after. We run like a well-oiled machine. Quality service at a reasonable price. Consistent training to ensure safe procedures and career enhancement by all rank and file in Nemlik opportunities. So these are, same thing, why are we successful? Each member of a community has and requires a number of officers assigned. We attain a hundred percent participation in the membership dues, the need for a true historical perspective, streamlining the organizational structure of the organization, collaborate to identify the future needs of operational units, develop a strategic plan for the next generation, identify if more communities want to join. So one of the, some of the things that we, why we have this is, we do have a high standard of the organization. There's a lot of other law enforcement councils in the state. Nemlik is by far the largest and most respected. We have been asked to assist in the last four presidential inaugurations. The only LEC out of the state to go down and do that. We also train with, high-trained in the SWAT team. We train with LA SWAT and Dallas SWAT. And a lot of our certain expertise that we have to do. We also fly in well-known operational guidance on that as well to train with our SWAT unit. What else do we have? Nemlik has more communities that want to join Nemlik constantly. The goal of Nemlik is not to have all the communities in Middlesex or Essex, but we want to have the majority. And we do have, every year, we still have communities either switching law enforcement councils, trying to come into Nemlik. Next slide. And these are some of the comments that our members have brought forward. I was bringing expertise back to the home departments. That's the biggest one. All this training that we do, some of it specialized, but some of it's above and beyond what the state mandates us to train. So they come back with different opportunities for training that they haven't seen, that they could come back and now they can teach their departments on those new trainings that they've participated in. Consistent commitment from individual unit members, community of knowledge. One phone call gets a job done. Respect from others, and we are the model LEC for others. Next slide. This last page is emergency activation. So how does it work if Essex needs help? They reach out to the North Andover Dispatch Center, that phone call. The chief or the officer in charge lets them know what's going on, what they're looking for. North Andover PSAP is the one that dispatches the units to the organization. And when that happens, you know, you have, when everybody thinks SWAT, you're thinking about a bunch of vehicles rolling down the road. It's actually, we can break each of these teams into smaller units. So like a SWAT team actually goes out more like a squad and not like a platoon. So it's maybe one vehicle, maybe two. Yeah, you probably have five operators show up along with an OIC, and they touch face with the OIC here, asking what they have. One of the biggest things we're seeing that SWAT is called out is for barricaded subjects, either with a weapon or without a weapon. That gets called out a lot. We have a lot of different equipment that our SWAT team is well-trained with. And everyone that they've gone to, everybody's safe at the end of the thing, including the person who was barricaded inside. We could do the same thing with our TR, the region response team. That is just a force multiplier. So it's officers that are trained on either mountain bikes, ATVs. If search and rescue, we have some drones as well. That can be a same thing. It could be, the RT is a little bit bigger than the SWAT team, so that could be a squad, a platoon, or the whole region response team as well, which, the whole team, you could have sixty officers here along with another forty SWAT members. So you could have a hundred officers here to assist you in whatever needs to be done in a very quick time. Any other questions?
How many incidences do you respond to a year of that nature there?
For those, all those units there?
Yeah.
So the one that gets called out the most is, I would say, is probably the SWAT team, and that includes IMAT as well. They probably get called out four times a week?
Yeah.
Both SWAT and?
Yeah, because the IMAT will roll with the SWAT team. Now, when I say that, again, it could be just five SWAT operators going with a small IMAT. They have a big van and we have a little van for IMAT that could show up to call.
Can I ask, how is this different from mutual aid? What, if we don't join and we have an issue?
Yep.
Do we not get mutual aid?
So I could tell you, you don't have a SWAT team on mutual aid. You don't have CISM's team. You don't have negotiators. You don't have, maybe some of the communities have ATVs, mountain bikes, and things like that. But it's just the sheer volume. And when these people showed up, they all, they're used to working together. So when that OIC from the SWAT team shows up and talks to the chief, he knows all the officers that are behind him to go through the mission. If you do mutual aid, you don't know who you're going to get. He doesn't know who he's going to get. So now he's got to manage that as well. So now you're asking your chief to manage the people coming or one of his assistants while he's trying to get, what's the issue right here? What resources do I actually need? You need the people to start managing people coming in. When you do this, only Nemlik people are showing up. When you call out mutual aid, it goes, if it goes out over the radio, you start getting people that self-deploy. What that means is, you could have state troopers show up, you could have local departments show up, which you don't know who's coming, so you're not prepared for that. A lot of times, that could be a hindrance if they all show up at one place and create a traffic jam. If this, you know exactly who you're going to get, they'll give you a timeline, when they should be there, and these are the resources that we're bringing. If he needs additional resources, he can just add that as well.
Question for Chief Francis. How often would you say in the past five years or whatever, or since you've been around, it's been five years at least, right? Yeah.
I guess it's ninety-five.
As chief.
As chief. I'm sorry.
As chief.
Yes.
Would you have requested one of these groups to come out, would you say?
We've had incidents where we've needed search and rescue.
We have had incidents where we've needed personnel for search and rescue type things. We've used the CISM. They've been kind enough to help, to let us be part, to take part in CISM incidents. When we've had, we had an incident where somebody was run over and died. We had an incident where we had a suicide, where a juvenile took his own life. Where we've had CISM response, have been involved with that with other communities. And I can tell you, it's, that is very helpful. That's an invaluable tool. I've participated in that, and some of the things we see are pretty tough to see. And let's not forget, and granted, we're not Boston, but right after dealing with that sort of a thing, we're right on to the next thing if there's a call. So some of these divisions, if you will, of Nemlik are just invaluable to us. And I have to, as far as like the chief had said about training, yes, we have mutual aid, we have a mutual aid agreement, but if we need, for instance, a SWAT team, and again, I can't emphasize enough, this is not just about SWAT. But if we need a SWAT team, we want people that are trained. And myself and Sergeant Davis were trained SWAT operators for the CART routine, CART team, Cape Pen Region Response Team, several years back, which dissolved. It is a special kind of training. And not to criticize, but when you think of Uvalde and some of the things that went wrong there, and I'm not going to armchair quarterback them, but I'm sure a lot of the hesitancy, if you will, was about training. And it's very important, and just to be able to have the experience that the Nemlik team has, and have them train us and help us train is just, it's an invaluable commodity, if you will.
So that comment about the, you know, if we had to have SWAT, and knock on wood, we have not had to have that. Is it coming from Sudbury? And so are we talking, if we needed to call SWAT, it's going to be a forty-five minute to an hour and a half?
Well, I won't speak for the chief, but let's not forget that we have all the communities around us on Nemlik communities. And the assistant control chief of the SWAT team is Chief Ed Conley from Gloucester. So there are trained SWAT offices around us that would respond, correct, chief?
Correct. They do not need to go anywhere. They're either on duty or they're at their house. All SWAT members have their own, take-home vehicles, so they just leave, if they're on duty, they leave for the department or they leave from their home. So half of Nemlik is in Essex County, so like you said, you could have a SWAT operator that lives over in Ipswich and be here.
Do you think if we had a need for SWAT, Chief Conley wouldn't respond? So let's say we put a call out to mutual aid and we needed somebody from SWAT, would he still respond even though we're not part of Nemlik?
No, we wouldn't.
He wouldn't?
No.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I was saying, like, Andover's a little bit bigger than Essex, but we're not a big department. I say one of the, one of the biggest things we've dealt with is wanderers. Being like elderly wanderer who has Alzheimer's, just the caretaker takes their eye off for a while and then realizes they're out of the house. And that is a time-sensitive issue. If they're gone for a few hours, that search area increases and you have minimal resources. Time is of the essence. We've used Nemlik, I want to say, I've been chief for ten years, we've probably used them five times for something like this. And just that force multiplier of having boots on the ground covering area is a lifesaver. Plus, now with the advancement of drones, Nemlik will come with drones as well and get eyes up in the sky to make sure you see things. I'm just trying to think some other valuable stuff that's not SWAT-related. I think the school threat assessment is a huge one. Chief Shear does a great job with that unit, and I believe you have a regional school, is it, and it's Essex-Manchester? Yeah. So that's another huge asset to you as well.
So when you, when we talk about the officer training that it offers, is this, would the communities have to pay additional for the officer training or is it part of?
No. So the only thing you pay for is that initial fee, and then however the chief works, you know, they have to, it's either if he's on a committee, he goes probably when he's on duty, but if he has somebody in RRT or SWAT, you just pay if that officer's on duty, I guess he goes there instead, or you may have to pay overtime, that's it. You don't pay any additional cost for any training that comes from Nemlik.
So the ten percent, which is one officer, does that mean that, you know, that salary goes to this for the entire year?
We would have to pay that officer's once-a-month training.
Just to...
We would just have to pay that officer's training, that once-a-month. But this is also something that we've discussed, that I can possibly be on a committee.
Yeah.
That would take care of that requirement.
I see. Okay.
Right. So if it works out that way, the chief is on a committee. It's an annual fee of fifty-five hundred dollars, and he's on salary, so there's no additional cost.
Right.
I don't know how long that would be permitted, but at least initially, that's what they're talking about.
So, yeah, so being on a committee, how it usually works is how long he wants to be on it. And it's usually the best way to kind of, when you're new to Nemlik, is figuring out how Nemlik actually works, is joining a committee.
And the town pays when an officer responds as part of one of these groups, if there is one on it?
Yeah. If he was on a, either STARS or CISM, yeah, we don't cover those costs. If there's a cost.
The town covers that cost.
Yep. Like I don't, like I have officers that belong to a lot of different teams and stuff. A lot of times, they're on duty, so they just, they just go. That's their place of duty at that point, so.
Can I just say? Also, what we need to keep in mind, though, let's say we have an incident here where they will be coming here, and all those offices that come here are not costing us anything.
Right. They're paid for by their home community.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. You know, one other time, God forbid, I, hopefully you never have to go through, we had the gas explosion. That happened like that. We had three communities that were all pulling resources in this general area. Luckily, we were all three Nemlik communities, so we were able to coordinate and use the same resources. I have fifty-six sworn. I was, you know, probably working at that time, there was probably twenty officers, maybe. If I was lucky, it was a change of shift. So we ran out of resources pretty quickly. We had additional, almost two hundred officers in our towns within thirty minutes.
Chief Keith, thank you for your presentation. So I have my list of questions. I always go last because I'm the one that makes your work up a sweat. You've probably heard, I'm the budget hawk.
Oh, okay.
So if you haven't heard that yet, you're going to get to experience it right now.
Yep.
So my first question is, how long has your department been with Nemlik?
So we weren't one of the original aids. Andover was the next in the, I guess, the first twenty-two communities?
So how many years?
So I think that was back in, probably seventy-two.
Oh, okay. Can you go to slide eleven? Can you go to slide 11? On slide 11, it talks about monthly meetings.
Yep.
It talks about these meetings for the chiefs.
If I can find slide 11. No, I gotta turn up and, I can...
So, it says that there's monthly meetings, and I wanted to know if this is chiefs only, or do others attend? Like, are command staff, do command staff go?
No, it's chiefs only.
Chiefs only.
Yep.
Slide 13. So, you touched on this, but I have kinda follow-up questions to this. It was about the dues. My question is, is the dues the same as the membership fee? So, they actually talk about these fees in three different ways?
It's the same thing.
So, okay, they do call it dues, which is the $5,500. My next question as a follow-up is, how often does that amount change? How many times have you seen that change in your years?
I think it went from $5,300 to $5,500, I wanna say, probably in 2018. So, it does not change annually, that we don't, it's, if it increases, it's usually, since I've been involved in stuff, it may increase like every six years, if needed.
In pretty minimal, $200 ranges?
Yeah, nothing big. We have, when we bought the large command post slash IMAT vehicle, I think we put in there that we had a, like a $500 cost as well for that vehicle for each community. And we let, that was like, over two years, I could've paid that.
So, with increased or additional participation, do you ever see that cost go down?
I haven't seen it going down. I haven't seen anything going down, anywhere.
On page four of the application process, it talks about budget allocation, that's not on that slide, budget allocation. And so, again, this is where it's worded differently, and that's, is that the same as well, as the dues, budget allocation?
Yep, yep, the dues, yep.
And then also, in the same presentation, a different presentation, funding is mentioned. So, I'm guessing that membership, budget, funding is all the same. They're just using different words in different spots.
Funding can be a little bit, but budget, membership dues is the same. Funding, it's, it looks like, you know, as far as, you may have to pay your officer overtime.
Okay.
You know, that's, because unless chief comes on a council, that's not an issue. But if you do have an officer assigned, there probably will be some cost to that.
Okay. Slide 13, it talks about the agency committing 10% of its personnel. So, for us in Essex, that would be one person.
Right.
Is that, has that percentage ever changed?
No.
Meaning, okay.
It's been 10% as long as I know. When I was on RRT, it was 10%. It's always been 10%.
Perfect. Slide 14. Here, where we talk about credits?
Yep.
And this is relevant for further question, but my question is, are credits the equivalent of hours?
Kinda. That's why they made it to the credits, because it's not exactly hours, but it's credit, because, like I said, when you talk, tier one is six credits, because you could just house a vehicle that belongs in Nemlik here in Essex, and you get six credits for that. The foundation members, they meet, I don't know if they meet, I don't think they meet monthly. Committee members, they do meet monthly. And then the next tier, the 12 credits, that would be SARS, CISM, because they train monthly, mortars, RRT, they train monthly as well. It's usually the, mortars, RRT, and SWAT, they all, well, RRT, SWAT, train together, and that's, I believe it's the first Wednesday of the month.
So, the contract language, the reason for that question about, are these, the equivalent of, the credits equivalent to hours, is that in the contract, it states that there is a monthly requirement of eight hours? So, and it does say, and your chief serves on the executive board for the towns, is the town's monthly time commitment the same? So, when our chief goes to a monthly meeting?
Yep.
Is that the eight hours, or is that different? That's just the chief's meeting and then?
Yeah, it's just the chief meeting. If he gets on a committee, like, let's say, standards committee, I think they meet like on a Thursday or something, once a month, they go in, that meeting, I mean, that meeting could last three hours, maybe, two hours. That, he makes that commitment, he's done for the month.
Okay. So, it's not the chief attending a meeting, then we need to have somebody for eight hours of training per month, okay?
That's why we say credits, it's not, it's not actually hours, it's more just...
But the contract language says that you have to provide somebody for eight hours.
Yeah, I think that they haven't probably updated that contract, because we've changed from the credits within the last six months.
Well, the entire contract refers to him or his, and never identifies a female chief. There's that, so probably should get up...
We have to update it.
Yeah. So, page four of the membership agreement, number five discusses the 10% and the eight hours monthly. Is this, oh, different, I actually asked the question, I got ahead of myself, so never mind that. On the contract, page three, request for assistance in the chain of command, it mentions designated representatives. Is this person part of monthly training? So, if you're identifying somebody as the designee, are they trained in Nemlik response, meaning more than just our chief? Or is that the assumption that the chief is that person?
The assumption is, it is the chief or an OIC. And so, what they're looking for, they don't need a lot of training, it pretty much, this presentation is what we taught two months ago to, like, OIC's lieutenants, small department sergeants, that need, you know, when the chief's out of town, whoever's the designated OIC, hey, how do I contact Nemlik, and what's the procedure? That's pretty much it. And once they contact it, the Nemlik resources are working for that person. So, again, he never gives up his responsibility to the community, he's in charge, we're just there to help him.
Sure. It's my understanding from speaking with another Mass chief, that in an effort to keep salaries, police salary budgets down, that some of the police chiefs are giving comp time for Nemlik calls instead of overtime? Can you speak to that?
I think that's individually departments, we have nothing to do with that.
Based on contracts.
Yep, yep, yep.
This question was asked, which was, how often is Nemlik deployed? And it sounds like it's very team-specific on how often that's deployed.
Yep.
Does the municipality get a say in which specialty or unit that they feel that they can best provide assistance in? And then, I just list out the groups, and I comment that Essex is a small town with very limited resources, so using us in an area that's most popular could be costly and potentially detrimental to such a small department. So, do we get a say in the area that we feel that we could best absorb or be beneficial to Nemlik without hurting our town?
Yeah, so, the selection for the officer that, or, that is entirely to the chief. So, for instance, if you have... Sergeant Bruce, did he leave?
Yeah.
He did. He started in Andover, so I know he was an outstanding dispatcher for us, and we hated to see him go, but I'm sure he's outstanding right now.
He was actually, Dan Morris, Officer Morris was a Nemlik dispatcher.
So, he's a perfect example, yeah. If someone has dispatch experience, their best, how they can help Nemlik is to be part of IMAT Communications. And if the chief is like, wants that, that's great, he'll go to that.
Yeah, but that's the second most-used call-out for Nemlik.
Well, it's up, it's his decision. Like you said, right now, he's looking at himself joining a committee. So, he's gonna learn, he'll join a committee, he'll help influence, you know, either policies, procedures for Nemlik, or he could be helping out on the budget of Nemlik as well.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask one question, going back to your comment? And that was, so is there a report that shows the deployment of all the different teams that are with Nemlik? That you can go look online and look at?
No, you couldn't go online and look at it, like, how many times they've been deployed?
Right.
Yeah, we could get you that information, yep. So, every time Nemlik is deployed, yes, there is a record of who goes, when they go, where did they go, we don't...
By community.
Yeah, it's, yep, by community. The biggest thing is, you gotta understand, is, again, we're mutual aid, so we are not writing police reports in Nemlik. That's up to the community that's requesting us. So, but we do have reports of what unit was called, what members of that unit deployed, and how often they deployed.
On one of the slides that we just saw, it talks about identifying and obtaining funding. My comment for you is, is that through grants, or what is that, what's the picture look like?
Yeah, it's a combination of grants, fundraising through the Nemlik Foundation. I'll give you an example for, we got a large state grant for, one of those slides that talks about all the different training we're gonna use, talking about CIT training, de-escalation. We got a, I think it's $65,000 to use this year, so, and it covers all those topics. So, there'll be different training. There's also training for Nemlik detectives as well.
Yeah, that was one of my questions. Another question, when you talk about training with LA SWAT and Dallas SWAT, who pays for that type of training? Do they come to us, do we go to them?
So, we've sent people out there, they've come to us as well, that's usually, that cost is covered by Nemlik.
By Nemlik, okay, great. So, we have two maps. Can you flip to the other map in the presentation? So, in doing research today, I noticed that in the presentation map, it shows you that Groveland, Bloxford, Essex is not part of Nemlik, and obviously others that are white. But then, when I logged in today to Nemlik, it shows that we are part of Nem...
No, it doesn't, unless you're looking at a different map.
No, that, so the brownish in Essex are not part of Nemlik.
It's the blue.
That's an old map, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an old map.
It's an old map, not a new map, okay.
So, the map that you just, prior that we showed, that's, that is the...
That's the current map.
Current one, including a few communities that are gonna get voted in tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. And then, the rest of my questions, I think, are actually for you, Chief Francis. I think they're all more Essex-specific, so I need you to go to the microphone. Sorry. We're being recorded and broadcast, so it needs to be recorded. Has the Essex Police Union weighed in on their desire to join Nemlik?
We have not had an official meeting on it, but everybody that I've talked to is all pro-Nemlik.
Do you know if this would be considered a change in working conditions per the union contract?
I do not. That is something that we would have to look into.
What would you anticipate any increased cost of training to the police budget being for joining Nemlik?
I'm sorry, the increased cost of the budget?
Right.
At this point, $5,500 a year. I would join a committee, and we have budgeted for training anyway, and it would have to just work into our budget.
So, you don't see it costing anything above and beyond the $5,500?
Not at this point. And as far as the change of working conditions, although I can't answer for sure, I don't believe it would be, because we're not forcing anyone to be on the Nemlik team. You know, it's more of a service that we would have to help the department.
So, if there's a request for an officer, it goes through you, and you can say no?
Yeah, it's up to me, and it's not, this isn't about officers just picking and choosing what they wanna do.
Right, yeah.
We would, it would be based upon what we feel is though is needed for us.
Yeah, and what you have available.
Correct.
Perfect. And just, I'm not the chief of police, but to answer your question, I can think of four different instances in the town of Essex where we probably would've called Nemlik in in the last year. And that's just the last year. So, I have no further questions, you both have answered all mine, so thank you very much. Does the board have any other questions?
I do not.
Do you have anything additional that you wanna add for us?
No, I gotta cut some cards, I'll give them to the chief here if you have any other questions.
I have one question for Chief Francis. So, if the board wants to move forward with this?
Yes.
Is it something you can absorb within the FY24 remaining budget dollars? Are you looking for joining it on July 1?
I will add to, so, we would, if he, whenever he joins, it'd be prorated, so, however...
I believe, I talked to Chief Fitzgerald today. Yeah, and they're getting voted in tomorrow, Rockport and Manchester, and Chief Fitzgerald told me that it would be prorated till the end of the year, and it's gonna cost them $1,800.
So, if you had a similar cost, would you be able to cover that within the existing budget?
Yes.
And then, for FY25, with the budget that got submitted and is now being printed, do you also anticipate that the department would be able to cover it?
I don't anticipate having to come back for more money at this point. Again, that's, and to be perfectly honest, that's, a lot of that's contingent upon what we discussed, what, with the full-time academy, if that's backfilled with all reserve, all overtime, and then somewhere in the middle, which is what I think is gonna happen.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you both. Have a great night.
I don't know, what's your pleasure on discussing?
Well, I think, I'm gonna reach out to the chief and talk about, I mean, we can continue to talk about it. So, my recommendation to the board is, we can do whatever we want. If you wanna make a motion to approve and move forward, my comments were gonna be, and again, I mean, we can do it in this form or not, but if we wanna entertain signing the contract, I think we should get a union vote, make sure that they're on the page. I think we should get a letter from the union stating that it's not gonna be a change in working conditions, because when we go to renew the union contract, if it is a change, it's gonna end up costing you more money that way. And then, get it in writing that the chief plans to be the designee, so that it's not costing the town additional funds. So, those would be my comments.
Those are good comments, I agree.
But I know that...
My only concern with that is, we did get a letter from the chief of retirement.
In a year.
In a year, so...
So, I think we would need to make that part of it, is, I wasn't...
Part of it, as far as part of the, the next chief's...
Then, whoever the next chief is, yeah. And it's, when you read the contract that Nemlik provided today, if you read the terms of that contract, it basically says that you can choose to leave Nemlik at any time. So, that's something you would leave as a tickler, that when the new chief comes in, renewing the Nemlik contract would be part of their contract, not their contract, but as one of the contracts that would need to be signed when the new chief starts. So, we could meet with the new chief and say, is being part of Nemlik something that that new chief would desire? I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to be part of it, but...
The change of working conditions is pretty important, I think, yeah.
Well, that's where it could cost you money.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, if this chief is committing to being your person, it doesn't cost you anything for a year and a half.
Right.
Basically, about $5,500, and then prorated this year. So...
So, I can work on, on understanding those two things, making sure that there's a commitment that there's no assignment beyond the chief serving on a committee. And I guess we'd have to talk about whether or not you need backfill when there is, when you're going to a meeting. You don't anticipate that.
I don't, no.
So, it truly would be $5,500, at least to start.
Yeah.
And it looks like we have someone from the union...
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you have enough of a quorum to take a union vote?
Yeah, I have not spoken to any union member that is not in favor of this. You know, Nemlik, I worked on our own regional SWAT team years ago with Chief Francis, and I worked with Nemlik several times, doing high-res search warrants, and we worked hand-in-hand with them in Watertown after the Marathon bombing. I can attest to how professional of an organization they are, well-trained, and everybody keeps talking SWAT, 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 but there's so much more than that. I can think of many, many incidents that I would've called out RRT, or any of the other groups to help us over the years, you know, as a supervisor, and back when I was just an officer, you know. A significant incident is gonna eat up manpower very, very quickly. And us being probably one of the smallest departments in the area, we need this more than anybody around us. And if you look at that map, every other community around us sees value in it.
So, that...
We need help more than anybody. We need help more than anybody.
So, that's, that's general support. I think what you're talking about is if we ever went to the step where it goes beyond the chief-
Right.
And you're looking at potentially assigning somebody from the rank and file to participate in Nemlik, I think that's when you'd want to get a specific statement from the union in advance. Because at this point in time, with just the chief participating, as long as that doesn't change, it wouldn't affect-
Right.
The officers, they're only going to get more support out of it.
And so, don't get me wrong, I actually support Nemlik. I'm, I'm in favor of voting in favor of signing the contract and moving forward. I just want to make sure that we have something in writing that are the controls that, because Chief, you say "at this point," but unfortunately-
I'm just-
At this point could be two weeks, it could be in 30 days, it could be in six months, it changes. So, I'm just trying to make sure that we have an understanding as, at this point, until your retirement? Or is it, do we, do we have some sort of a date range? That's why I'm pushing for the-
We have nothing specific. The reason I said "at this point" was because I was not 100% sure that they would let me just continue to keep doing that. Now, Chief Keefe said that I could do that. I can do that until I walk out the door. I don't have a problem with that. I'm, I'm on a few committees now, not for Nemlik, but I'm on the Mass Chiefs of Police Safety and Security Committee as we speak, and I've been on that for, I don't know how many months. So, I can still participate in that. There may at some time come a need for us to have an officer on something which we can discuss. I don't want to look you in the eyes and say it's never going to happen because that's, that's not realistic. But I don't see, foresee in the future myself having to change that. It's, for me, it's just so important to get involved with Nemlik. And, and the officers can tell you, we are doing so much more training with the schools now. As a matter of fact, this Saturday, we have training at the schools with Manchester Police Fire, our fire department. There's just so much to it. So, it's just, it's important.
So, you know that I'm the budget hawk, and clearly you've heard me say it, and I know that you know that because we have a lot of budget conversations. I guess my concern is, I'm always thinking about the dollars and cents and how it affects and impacts the town. So, if we had to name an officer that was going to be the Nemlik officer, we'll use Ryan Davis, if we were going to make Ryan that person and he needed to go, would you be able to backfill him so it doesn't cost the town in overtime?
Depends on what's going on.
Yeah.
To be perfectly honest with you. I'm not going to say never, but we, there's just so much going on at any time. I don't know, it depends on when it is. But at this point, I don't even anticipate that happening.
The meetings are always in the same place, what do you say, Wakefield or somewhere?
They're at the Municipal Police Training Committee Facility.
Yeah, so like a half an hour or so away.
The academy in Linfield.
Yeah, right.
If you're thinking that one of us is going to end up on the SWAT team, and that's going to be call-out after call-out after call-out-
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
It's not going to happen.
Um, so Ryan, obviously-
Elite group, and their tryout standards are very, very high, and it would not be a good fit for our community.
But even if you, so my concerns go to things like, even if you're, let's not say SWAT, let's go with something else. Let's go with School Threat Assessment and Response, which I don't know how busy that is because I didn't ask that question. But with what's going on in the climate today, and the amount of issues we have in schools, you could be called out five days a week. So, and I don't know which one of these is the least called-out ones, but that's why I asked the question, is that does the municipality have some say in which one we join? Naturally, from my point of view, I would, I would want the one that we would be called out the least, right?
I think you would through the chief of police, yeah.
Well, we would need the most here, so we have a trained officer here.
I would also offer that since the selectmen have to sign the contract, the selectmen can get out of the contract. If, if something, if something ever happens that you say, this is not supportable and it's a debate, get out of the contract, that's what I would say.
Yeah, so I guess just having some levers in place to make sure that what we're discussing is what is the path forward? I'm fine with that. How are you guys feeling? Are you ready to, for me to entertain a motion?
It seems as though it's a pretty good deal, at least the way it's laid out now. I mean, in the future, who knows, you know, depending on some of the unknowns, but it seems like it's a pretty good deal, and it's maybe important for the town to be involved.
Alva, how are you feeling?
So, although I don't think $5,000 is that big of a deal, I am concerned more about losing out on an officer because they're out doing Beverly, and they're out doing someplace else, and then we're down, we only have a two-man crew, so that, I mean, a two-car crew. So, that's kind of scary to me. So, am I against it? No, but am I 100% for it? I'm, I'm iffy, I am.
Well, and I don't think we would be, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we would be down on an officer. From what I'm understanding, it sounds like if you had somebody that specialized in a particular thing, you would have to bring somebody in to backfill that, which would just equal overtime, which is why I was asking the chief, would you backfill it so that we weren't paying for overtime?
I mean, you got to understand, right now, our staffing is so low that we're filling so many shifts with overtime-
Anyway, yeah.
That we're, I have no intent right now of putting somebody on Nemlik that's going to have to go once a month and train. We, he's the training coordinator, he can tell you. We're fighting to backfill shifts for people that need training. We have two detectives that we have to send to training that's required, I believe it's by MGL, right? That we have to get that stuff done. So, trust me, I'm very budget-conscious, I'm in that budget constantly. The last thing I'm going to do is put this department in a situation where we don't have the manpower, we don't have the money.
Well, why not join a contingent on the selectmen saying that if it ever goes beyond the chief, they're going to reconsider the membership?
That's what we can do.
That's all you need to do if you're concerned about that.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's up to you from the town's perspective. As far as their contract, their contract is what their contract is, so I'm not sure of that.
Right, well, we-
I'm going to put that as part of the vote and have them discuss it.
Have who, Nemlik discuss it?
No, no, the union. Are you talking about the union members?
No, I was talking about Nemlik themselves.
Oh.
No, Nem, but I can look at the contract, but doesn't, didn't we just say that it is, you can leave at any time?
Yeah, there is a vote, but it's in, the only issue is it does say that the chief of police is going to execute-
There's a vote for them to let you out, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's like two-thirds or something.
Two-thirds vote.
Yeah.
I see. So, that makes it a little more complicated.
So, that is in our saying, two years down the road, this isn't really worth it to us.
Not without going through a process, that's why I wanted to see what it, exactly what it said.
We can also table a discussion and do further investigation, or I can take a motion.
With your contingencies?
With contingencies.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we do that?
So, I will entertain a motion to sign the contract between the Essex Police Department and Nemlik, contingent upon receiving a union vote with a letter stating that the union is in support of joining Nemlik, that it would not constitute a change in working conditions, and that the chief of police plans to stay the designee of the Nemlik group until his retirement.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen's March 25th, 2024 open meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 As the board will recall, we received notification that we had the Essex Bay Sailing Club's sailboats that were parked on town property. So, in working with the, with Bill Liberte-
Liberty.
Liberty, we were able to work out a license to utilize 103 Canomo Point Road. There were some terms that Bill was a little unsettled with, so that's coming back to us this evening. I'm going to have Beazie take it from here and explain the dating and the insurance limits, and then we can talk about that.
Right, initially, we were told when we asked the question how long the boats would be stored into the spring in a given year. We were told end of May, but now we're being told that it could be end of June. Also, they only have a $1 million liability policy, and the license that was put together was looking for two. I don't think that's such a big deal. I think the bigger deal is just how long you want the boats there into the season.
All the boats are going to be stored on that gravel area, right? Not on grass?
No, they're stored on the grass because what we found is when we got the kayak racks, the first year with the kayak racks, they were placed on the grass, and because it was such a wet season, it ruined all the turf. So, we actually asked the sailing club to put the very lightweight sailboats on the grass and put the kayak racks on the gravel.
So, the grass will be shielded from the sun, will be dead, or maybe, who knows?
To the extent that it's beyond the growing season.
Well, especially if it's going into June.
Yeah, and that's what I mean in-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an additional month.
Yeah. Which, I mean-
Where have they been storing them?
I think it's-
Different properties, well, I'm basing that on the fact I took a drive around and found them at different properties.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't it be incumbent upon them to figure out how to get them off our prop, our town's property by the end of May? I mean, why couldn't they go in the water? But I don't know, what-
They store them down on the marsh, you know, and on, on the beach during the season. You know, I wonder if that could be done.
Yeah, I don't know. I know we can't prescribe storing anything on the marsh itself, I know that.
We can't, but can we have them mow along, so at least they're moved around a little bit, so?
Maybe, that's a good compromise.
Yeah, and my only thing is with June, I mean, all right, we've had such a rainy couple of seasons, maybe we won't have sunny May's anymore. But if it's really great weather, May and June, they're just going to take up spots where people would have gone to and sat.
Possibly.
On the grass?
At Clammers Beach, right?
Oh, no, they put them off-
Well, no, they're sitting on a parcel that's in the middle of Beach Circle, that middle parcel.
Okay, yeah, by the road.
And then they move them to down by, you know, the, the stone pier there, somewhere up high on the marsh when they're being used.
When they're being used, I believe they're attached to a, um-
They're attached to the pier by front beach.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess my feeling is, we could also put in a license that they have to restore the property back to its original condition so that if they do kill the grass, they have to plant new grass.
Yeah, maybe it's easier to just have them mow it so they move it around just so that the grass doesn't die because, you know, you don't want dirt with grass seed in it, you know, because it's not going to grow very well, and then it's going to be muddy and all that. I don't know if that's, you know, too onerous for them, but it doesn't seem like it would be.
You could have them move the boats weekly in May and June and mow.
Yeah, that's what I mean, move them around, not come back in the exact same place. When do the racks go out of the gravel?
Probably sometime in April. I think he's going to get ready to do-
Usually April 15th, he starts to get ready to put everything in.
So, maybe just move them into the gravel after those are gone.
That would work. And then instead of doing a hard date, we could actually work with the harbor master to get, because the, the date may change.
Or you'd say, they move to the gravel after the town's equipment is off the lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Promptly?
Prompt, immediately. And I'm fine with a million dollar of insurance.
Sure.
I think there's anything they can do there that would be, we don't have a building or anything.
Okay, so if the board's okay with that, then I can pose, propose that.
Do you want to take a vote, or just propose it, and then we'll bring it back for signing? Because we're still in April.
Because we may be by the time-
At our next meeting. Well, we're April 20th.
April 22.
April 22, so he would have it, probably the racks will just be moving, and he'll be able to just move the sailboats.
Sure.
But do you want to vote tonight, or do you want to make sure he's fine with that? I guess it really doesn't matter if he's not fine with it.
If we bring it to him, hopefully I can come back to you on 22nd with it signed, with those provisions in it.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve the license to utilize 103 Canomo Point Road by Essex Bay Sailing Club with the two changes of allowing the sailboats stay till the end of June and decreasing the $2 million liability policy to $1 million policy, with the exception that the sailboats must be moved off the grass and onto the gravel as soon as our kayak racks are removed by the harbor master.
So, moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve and authorize the chairman's signature on the marina and marina operators liability insurance policy renewal proposal from Maya.
So, moved.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman's signature on a public official's liability insurance application.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman's signature on a law enforcement professional liability insurance application.
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We received an email from the current sitting president of the Canomo Point Association, Craig Markowitz, who I believe is actually on the call with us this evening. It reads, "Good afternoon, Ruth. We are writing to you and the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Canomo Point Association Board of Directors to express our concerns over certain activities and trends observed at Canomo Point during the summer months. With more parking, public amenities, for example kayak racks, and other activities like the Essex Bay Sailing Club, more families and people now enjoy Canomo Point waterfront. This activity is great to see, however, it causes some concerns best addressed by the town of Essex. Specifically, the number of people who are in and around the water has increased significantly. Moreover, the coastal erosion and abnormally high tides have altered the tidal flats and made currents more hazardous. Although the CPA hires lifeguards during the summer months, these lifeguards are responsible for the safety of the people on and around Canomo Point docks, not for the beaches, low-tide flats, or town property. We believe these changed circumstances warrant the employment of at least one lifeguard by the town of Essex for the safety of all people enjoying Canomo Point waterfront. Additionally, the CPA board also suggests that the Board of Selectmen consider deploying trash barrels and sanitary facilities, or porta-potties, to adequately accommodate the increasing number of visitors to Canomo Point. We hope that the Board of Selectmen considers these and other measures to help ensure the health and safety of the public who enjoy Canomo Point, and we would be happy to discuss possible solutions. We would also like to acknowledge the Essex Police Department's attention to the road's safety at Canomo Point, for example, setting up speed traps and speedometer signs. These actions have made a very positive impact." Thank you, Craig Markowitz, President, Canomo Point Association. So, we received that correspondence back on March 23rd. It was shared with the board, and obviously on the agenda for discussion tonight. Craig, I see that you've dialed in with us. Would you like to, clearly I've read the email, but do you want to speak to any of that? If you do, feel free to unmute. And maybe we need to unmute you, bear with me. Okay, you're free to, we can hear you now, Craig.
Good, good, and sorry if I didn't mute on the call. I was having some issues with my Bluetooth, but, yeah, no, thank you. I think the letter summarizes it pretty well. And it's just been something that we've been seeing, you know, ever more and more increasing, you know, down there, and it's very active docks, very active areas, especially at low tide, too. And, and yeah, we just wanted to bring it to the, to the town's attention.
Great, we appreciate it.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, it's probably needed. Would the CPA still be hiring the lifeguards for the actual docks and that general area? And then there would be a separate lifeguard for the rest? Or would that, this lifeguard that the town hires take over for what?
Craig, can you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we still plan to hire a lifeguard, so past, you know, ever, ever since I've been going down there, there's been lifeguards, I think since 2020, it's been, they've been tough to recruit. We had to go up to $20 an hour with our pay to compete, you know, with other opportunities that they get out there. But what we do is we have a rotation of three lifeguards that are on the docks from 9 until 5 during the week, and then from 10 to 6 on the weekends, just to accommodate the, you know, the additional traffic. So, there's just so much going on by our docks between the inflatables and people pulling up in boats and kids swimming around the docks. That, that lifeguard just, you know, has so much to control just with that, right? To keep their head on a swivel and see around that whole perimeter of the T docks. So, you know, we would, we would, again, to answer your question, we'd still employ that lifeguard, but just with all the other areas, you know, the beach right on either, on the left side of the pier, if you're looking at the ocean, and then especially as low tide, you know, goes out, it's just a lot of people swimming everywhere on the flats, you know? So I know even with that would be a tall task for for one additional lifeguard, too. But, but I think it it could, it could help out tremendously.
Great, thank you, Craig. My big concern, and certainly, Al, I wanna make sure you have a moment, too, but my concern is that this request just didn't come to us sooner. Obviously, we've been talking about the budget since November, and we actually voted to close it, put up the warrant. We didn't budget for any of this, so.
There's no entry on the wage and salary scale either. There's no position.
So this is something that, even if we were interested, couldn't even take place until the next fiscal year, so.
It would have to be planned in December when we start the next budget cycle. It's too late.
Right, absolutely. I think it's worth a discussion, but I just want Craig to realize that it's not that we're saying no. It's that we're saying, this isn't a discussion that we can necessarily have at this moment. I think it's something that, and again, I wanna let you speak, but I think we should table this, bring it back, start discussing it in October, November, talk about what this looks like, whether it's a shared person, whether it's a full person, what that looks like, and then plan it into the budget. So, and in the meantime, I think we should do some outreach, talk to our constituents and see, you know, how much they're utilizing it, what what they wanna see down there as well, so.
I I've seen a.
Yeah.
A market increase in the use of the area.
Well, I have two, well, and I have two, but I guess one of my questions is, is it Essex residents using it or are we seeing a lot more non-resident use?
The parking is Essex, you know, primarily.
No, the parking lots, correct.
Yeah.
But if you go down there.
If you go down the road.
Beautiful time of tides.
Right.
The kayakers are lined up down, down the street.
Yeah.
So the things that I look at is, one is that, hey, can we figure out a way of charging those people who, you know, come and put their kayaks in and go out? I know everybody likes to get everything for free, but we have to pay for things. And then the other thing, my thoughts are, I don't like the idea of putting trash barrels, because then we have to have somebody clean them up constantly, so at a minimum, can we get at least signage there that says, you know?
Take your trash home.
Yeah, what do they call it?
Carry and carry.
Yeah, that one.
Aren't there, isn't there a porta potty in the parking lot?
In the upper, the upper lot.
Yeah.
Canomo Lane.
The boating.
So I thought they did. Craig, doesn't the Canomo Point Association have a porta potty at the, um, the boathouse?
We do, yeah, at the boathouse for boathouse events and for the Essex Bay Sailing Club.
Right. So I think that the Board of Selectmen seems positive about your suggestion and not saying no, but as you clearly knew, it's, we're outside of budget season and this was not planned enough in advance. So we will table this discussion. We'll bring it back in October, November. We'll put a tickler on our agenda. We'll make sure we invite you when we do so, and we'll take this up for discussion at a later date.
Yeah, all right, sounds, sounds like a plan, Ruth, and I really appreciate you and the board and as well as Brendan and everyone else's openness to this. And, you know, sorry that we didn't make the budget season. Another thing that I'll note, too, you know, perhaps you and I offline can coordinate a time that we could have the board out there.
Absolutely.
You know, weekend or even like a, you know, I bet the first Friday after school gets out will be a good one, you know, to see. And, and like, you know, like I've heard, everybody sees what's going on down there. It's a busy place. It's awesome to see. The waterfront is getting utilized and that's, that's the, that's the best part of it. So, yeah, we welcome you guys to come down and walk it with us and we can talk through, talk it through further.
We would love to do that. We're doing a site visit tomorrow at four thirty on Canomo Point before the season starts, so we would love to be invited back during the busy season and see what things are looking like at that point.
Perfect.
All right, thanks, Craig. Have a good night.
Thank you as well. You, too. Thank you.
Paul, forgive me, I didn't even realize that you stayed. I saw everybody exit and then I never looked up again, so I think you're staying. You know what? Let's do it now so that we can let you leave, and I apologize. I sincerely didn't even notice that you stayed.
Thank you.
No, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. So Chief Francis has stayed with us in the, in the room this evening, so for those of you that are joining, you'll see that one of the last agenda items is to review a letter from Police Chief Paul Francis indicating that he will not be seeking a successor employment agreement after his current employment agreement expires on June thirtieth, 2025. So as is customary, what happens when we have, we have four employees in the Town of Essex that are contracted with the Board of Selectmen, the chief's position being one of them. In a year prior to the end date of any contract with any of our contracted employees, we find out if they're interested in a successor agreement. And at which point, we, the select board goes into executive session, we talk about whether or not we wanna offer a contract, and then we execute that contract after a vote. So Paul Francis is at that age. Happy birthday. Today is his birthday.
Thank you very much.
And you're with us and not having cake.
That's all right.
But today is his birthday, and he has met with his family, and they think it's time, and he is not gonna seek a successor agreement. So he writes to us, for everybody that's joining us and didn't get a copy of the letter. He says, "Dear Board of Selectmen, as you know, the final year of my current three-year employment agreement with the Town of Essex commences on July first, 2024, and ends on June thirtieth, 2025. As such, I've been advised by the town, by Town Administrator Brendan Zubricky that the Board of Selectmen would like to ascertain whether or not I will be seeking a successor contract as you begin to consider whether or not you intend to negotiate a successor contract with me. I'm writing this letter to advise the Board of Selectmen that I do not intend to seek a successor employment agreement to remain the Chief of Police with the Town of Essex, Mass. Respectfully, Chief Paul D. Francis." So, the microphone is yours.
Yeah, there's really not much to say about it. It's just, it's time. I've been here twenty-nine ye- I'm in my twenty-ninth year. I actually started law enforcement as an auxiliary officer at Saugus in November ninety-four, so. It's time with all that's going on in law enforcement, I think it's time to do something different, so.
Congratulations, a little early.
I know.
It's exciting, but it's like, once you announce it, though, it feels like it's so far away.
Yeah.
Now that you've put it in writing, don't you wanna give us two weeks and, I know, like a year and a half? It seems forever.
Well, you know what? You and I both know how quick time flies.
It flies way too fast.
It'll be here quick.
It will be.
So I have to start planning now.
Well, we appreciate you. We appreciate you as our chief and all that you've done and how great you've been with the community, and we look forward to the next year and two months with you, three months with you.
Thank you very much. It's certainly been a pleasure working here, and thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too. Good night.
And I would say the board should give some thought to when you think you might wanna start thinking about.
The process.
The process.
That was my question.
You wanna start at least a year out, okay? We're, we're ahead of that right now.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like, so maybe, you know.
Why don't we start talking about it sooner rather than later? But I think not tonight. Just.
No, not tonight, I, no.
Maybe right after town meeting.
Yes, let's do, or, yes, let's do that. Let's do it, the second meeting in May. That's perfect.
Can I ask, so at this point is when we would look, review the current contract and then decide what we keep, what we, what we adjust, what?
So if, if you would, you would go through a process, and it ranges from internal promotion all the way to doing a full assessment center, where you have people apply, and you, you look at the candidates and, and choose a potential chief. Then it's up to that person to negotiate with the board as to what the contract should, should look like. And at that point, if there are things that you see that are being proposed to be repeated, but you don't necessarily agree with those, that's when you'd have to negotiate those things out of the current practice.
Yeah.
And I think we should take a hard look at.
Yeah, it comes with the proposal.
We talked about that a little bit.
So when we start talking about things that we wanna see in a contract, do we have the legal right to go into executive session, even though we're not meeting with a candidate?
Don't think so.
Okay.
No, because it has to be with respect to an actual con- contract with a specific person.
But what we can do is we can individually send you recommendations that can be discussed, so that you can put them into a format.
And then eventually you'll get a proposal from someone, and you need to determine, you know, whether or not you're going to meet that person with, with those requests or pare it down and say, look, if you wanna work for this town, kind of, these are our limits, these are our boundaries. And you could even start saying those types of things during interview and assessment processes, because that gives the applicant an idea of, if there are limits, that they're looking for some other community that has got other resources and a different tradition, that they may, may think, may or may not think twice.
Right.
About what they're looking for.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we've had conversations with the school about right sizing it and talking about needs versus wants versus, you know, anything extra, and I think that.
We may not change.
We may not, but.
But we just, we should be looking at it to understand what's in it and, you know, is, is it tweaking?
Right, and in right sizing, it means we should look at all of those things, you know? We should be looking at, is our fleet too big? Do we need to get rid of this? Do we need to upgrade that? So we need to look at all of those things, and I think with the, with the opportunity of a new chief coming in, we can maybe make some of those changes, so. Perfect. Okay, so second meeting in May, we'll talk about that. Next on the agenda is to accept a letter of resignation from Keith Cotter as Deputy Chief from the Board of Fire Engineers, and we did receive a lovely letter, so for the public, it says, "To whom it may concern, after over forty years of service on the Essex Fire Company, I've made a decision to retire. It has been a rewarding and memorable experience. I'm thankful for the opportunities and experiences I've had during my time with the department. I'm proud to have worked, with, of the work that has been accomplished to protect and serve our community. I also wanna thank the community for their trust and support. As I move on to the next phase of my life, I will carry the lessons learned and memories made during my time with the department. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Sincerely, Keith Cotter." Very nice letter, thank you, Keith. I will entertain a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Keith Cotter as Deputy Chief from the Board of Fire Engineers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint David Perrine to the position of Board of Fire Engineers Deputy Chief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve a request to the Finance Committee for a line item transfer in the amount of two hundred dollars from the Shellfish Vehicle Fuel to Shellfish Boat Repairs.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve a request to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of three thousand dollars for street lighting.
What is that, Brendan?
Street lighting, meaning literally.
The cost of.
The cost of electricity to light up the, the overhead lights.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve a request to the Finance Committee for a Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-three B transfer in the amount of one thousand dollars from Appeals Board expense to Appeals Board clerical.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I, and I would say that the motion should carry that it will be as soon as that can be considered, which is May first, because it's the last two months of the fiscal year. You're just doing it in advance.
Add it to the motion.
Yep. PM, did you get that? That's gonna be a, a, that, that Thirty-three B will be effective as of May first.
I will entertain. Bear with me, because some of these clamming licenses have some issues.
This is from the work you did previously.
Yes. The, I will entertain a motion to ratify the board's decision at the previous meeting to allow commercial clambers Julian and Yucca Bilili to obtain renewal licenses without a gap in licensure after paying late fees and further the board's consideration at the present meeting of alternative residency documents for Yucca Bilili.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the board's decision at the previous meeting to designate Chairman Perrine as the official Town of Essex representative to the Essex Elementary School Building Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna do reminders. We have a, the Planning Board will host a public hearing regarding the zoning bylaw amendment proposal on April seventeenth, 2024, starting at seven PM, Third Floor Auditorium of the Town Hall. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place Monday, April twenty-second, 2024, at six PM, Third Floor Auditorium of Town Hall, Thirty Martin Street. Brendan, was there anything not anticipated that came in?
Uh, yes. So we have been informed by our HVAC contractor, who's been working on our system over the winter and trying to get ready for the air conditioning season, that the system has a leak, and they've been able to isolate the fact that the leak, unfortunately, is not with the outdoor equipment. It's somewhere in the building. We wanna go ahead and square up with them for the work they did over the winter, but before we launch into people going around with leak detection devices, and usually they put some kind of a chemical into the lines and they go around with a sniffer, I just want the board to be aware that it's, it could be a bit of a hit or miss process, especially if the leak is in a wall. Yet, I'm not sure what kind of choice we have, because we need air conditioning. This building doesn't do well without it. It may run into the, to put to the point where we have to go and seek additional funding or do a line item transfer, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention before I authorized the contractor to, to move ahead.
Yeah.
Not anything we've ever dealt with.
Can you square up with the contractor at this point and give me a couple of days to see if I can work with somebody just to ask some questions before we approve it?
Yep.
I was gonna say, is it their equipment that can see if there's moisture?
It's, uh, well, when these things leak, they're leaking this, the Freon gas.
Freon.
They're not leaking, this is a, a ductless system, so it's the, the split system.
Mini splits.
Oh, okay.
So all your, all you've got in the walls are, you know, gas lines.
Yeah.
And it's Freon gas, so it's not like a normal gas sniffer that can detect it.
Right.
You have to charge the system with some kind of.
Yeah.
Chemical.
So, Peter, can I have the folder of licenses?
I have other, I have.
You, you, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so your next meeting, not your next meeting, town meeting after the next meeting is on May sixth. Town meeting now starts at six forty-five. It doesn't start at seven thirty anymore. Does the board want to have its meeting before town meeting at, say, five fifteen?
Sure.
That'd be an hour and a half in advance.
Do that? Yes, let's do that.
Town meeting's at five fifteen?
Town meeting is now.
So this would be the Selectmen's meeting in advance. Town meeting starts at six forty-five now, for the first time ever.
That's May sixth.
Yep.
All right, so five fifteen?
Okay, so that's that one. And then we were told just today by the Shellfish Constable that he took the Shellfish truck for inspection, and it needs two new catalytic converters. Now, I have to tell you that we got this truck in 2018. It's a 2012 truck, and we got it for free from State Surplus. This is after we had the big storm come in, and it flooded out the previous truck, which was an old hand-me-down from the DPW. We got actually more money than, than that truck was actually valued at, or we, as what we thought, anyway, in the insurance settlement, and then we got a free truck to replace it. So the question is, do you wanna try spending some money on this truck? I don't think we wanna, we've never gone toward a new vehicle. The only other option would be to see whether we could get another surplus truck. And if we can, that'd probably be the best road forward. He can drive the truck that he's in for sixty days, because it wasn't a safety fail, it was purely an emission tailpipe fail.
Yeah, that makes sense, 'cause, you know, it's, something else is gonna go, too, so we fix that, and I'm sure.
And it says that the front driver's side frame rail is completely rotted up.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be a welding.
Yeah, and this truck is used near saltwater going in and out. I mean, it's, stands for reason.
So I can, I can look at that, update you at the next meeting, and then decide, because I think I can get an answer from our source at the State Surplus Yard, so that you can make further decisions and get it on the agenda for the next one.
Surplus is the way to go, if we can.
Yeah.
And those were the other things that I had.
Perfect. So I'm gonna bring the board's attention to licensing. I have a folder of licenses before us this evening. As you know, I review the licenses before we meet and just make sure that everything has checks and balances. All of the licenses this evening are in a big clip, because actually every one of them has some sort of a problem. So, but it's, it's up to the board to decide if we feel that those problems are big enough to stop the license from moving forward and send it back for more information, or if you are okay with passing them as they, as they sit today.
And I can read a little bit from the regulations. It says, "The Board of Selectmen may, in their sole discretion, accept other articles or confirmations as proof of residency in extenuating circumstances," and you've done some of that recently, "and may, in their sole discretion, waive any or all of the street census list requirements." So it's within your purview to make exceptions. The question is, in each case, are you com- it's within your purview to make exceptions. The question is, in each case, are you comfortable with with the information they provided to make a waiver in any other?
And that's what all of them are failing with.
So they're all a little bit different. So I'll I'll go through them. Now that you've heard that we have is kind of the sole discretion of the board, and you know that, I'll tell you what each one's problem is, and we can decide on their own merits. So the first one before us this evening is Mr. Robert Fitzgerald. It's a commercial shellfish permit application, and he does not have the current street census. So he does provide us with a tax bill showing he lives in Essex. I do have his driver's license. I have a state license, and I have his registration. It does say that he did that the clerk can certify that there was a previous year census returned, but not a current year census. Do we feel that that is
So he didn't fill it in?
He didn't send in the the current year census. And I will
And there's nothing he can do, right? I mean, he loses his license till the next census.
So what I what I should actually, before we talk about censuses, it was brought to my attention that our outgoing town clerk has gotten a little bit behind with some of the stuff, so she actually can't confirm or deny that the census was not sent in. It actually very likely may have or potentially been sent in and has not been processed yet. So that could just be, if we sent it back to her office, she would then have to go through those and find his and confirm that, in fact, it never was sent, or it really isn't the pile.
Right.
And the does our description say you must have filled in a census?
Yeah.
Yes, it's at our discretion to decide if we don't want if we're okay with not accepting it.
So what does happen if you don't fill it in? Does that mean you can't get a license renewal until the next census comes out?
Well, he's already paid a late fee, so I would think that as soon as he gave us a census, we could then approve it, just put it on the
So he could just go, he could just put one in.
I mean, honestly, I say he's paying a late fee. He's got his, he's got other proof, and he has more than one. I I'm for voting approval.
But the reason is to get people to submit
Submit their census.
You know, so but I agree. I mean, you know.
Well, we could also vote to approve this contingent upon receiving the census, and when he comes to pick it up, we could have the town clerk say, "I need your census. You can have your license."
Do that.
You want to do that? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the commercial shellfish permit application for Robert Fitzgerald contingent upon receiving the current year census.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what if he's lost it? Can he come in and just fill one out when he comes in?
Yeah, fill new one in.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, that sounds fine.
So you're an aye as well, Elva?
Yes, please.
And I am an aye. So he will be contingent on getting a census. So the next one on our list, I'm going to skip down. All the ones in the middle have some real problems. The non-resident shellfish permit. I have rejected this a couple of meetings ago, because this one came in where the applicant filled in a 2020 annual non-resident shellfish permit application and just scribbled it out and wrote 2024. And I commented that they need to use the proper application, because
Is it different?
It's it is. It's the same format, but different. They are updated every year, and anything new is there. The issue I have, and I'll pass this around for the board to see, is that the signature on the passport, which I checked when I checked the first application, matches, and whoever signed the next application, it is not that person. So they need to send me a document that's signed by the applicant. So if they want to look at that, but I'm not
Signed by the applicant or signed by the sponsor?
Signed by the applicant. So the first, if you go to the second application, Peter, that's the 2021, and you compare that to the passport, you can see that the person actually signed it. And then if you look at the next application, you can tell that someone signed it for him. It's not even close.
No, it's not at all.
It's completely forged.
I think both might have been.
So this one can go back for an actual signature. So if you look at, see his passport right there? And then this is the first application. You can tell it's that. And then when you go to this signature here. The next two applications that I'm going to review are for Anita Zalja and Eugene Zalja. So they are listed under the commercial shellfish permit applications that have incomplete packets. So these two residents live at 73 Martin Street. Their packets each have their driver's license, their state ID card. They have their tax bill. What they are missing is a current year census, and then their registration is in the name of their construction company, Zalja Construction, and it's not, generally speaking, when we do the commercial shellfish permits, the registration has to match the registered owner of the driver's license, and this is a construction company. So this is to our discretion. I know that all of us drive by the landing. I think probably if you know the Zalja Construction vehicle, you do know that that is what they drive, and that is actually what they launch their shellfish boat with, or their, you know, skiff with.
Yeah.
So this has to be our comfort level and our discretion if we feel that we're satisfied with a commercial registration for them as proof of a vehicle.
And the commercial registration is out of what address?
73 Martin Street in Essex.
It's not their name, right?
It's just not their name, but it is their last name, and it is their construction company.
Yeah, I mean, the same thing as we did before, maybe with
Okay.
The census.
The census. So I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024 commercial shellfish permit applications for Eugene Zalja and Anita Zalja contingent upon receiving the current year census.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the next four applications before us, they're just kind of fraught with problems. There the address in question is 200 Western Ave.
For who?
So there are four of them. It's going to be for
They're all in the same place?
They're all for the same place, yes. So it's the Kuka family. It's Voglesh Kuka, Labay Kuka, Dennis Kuka, Marquese Kuka. So when you look at each of these applications, they so first, they do not have a lease. They are tenants that rent without a lease. So we received a note that just says, "I'm writing to confirm that they live at this address." That's one thing which, you know, we can accept if we want to. I'll pass this around. We don't have any of them with current censuses. The bigger issue for all of them is they've paid the wrong amount. So there's some weird amounts of money that were due, and we're not really sure one of them is right.
Right, so two people paid paid for the late fee.
Yep.
$600. It's the the original 400 plus 200. And then one of them tacked on $30. So one check is for 600, and one is for 630.
Right.
And it's purportedly to cover the other two at $15 apiece for commercial, non-senior applications. So it doesn't make any sense, because a senior application is free.
Right.
And a commercial one is 400. There's no there's no level of commercial
That's $15.
That's $15.
Yeah.
So and have they had a license in the past?
They all have had a license in the past.
And they've lived at the same place?
Yes.
So should we just tell them they need to pay the proper fees and do the census?
Oh, there was one other piece. I apologize. I didn't go through the whole packet. So for Labay Kuka, I have a driver's license and a state, but I don't have a registration to prove the vehicle that they're towing with. So that was, and I don't have a census.
They gave one vehicle registration in the pack of four, and I don't know who it's supposed to be. I think it is in someone's name.
They all use it supposedly. Is that what they're trying to say?
There'll be one one there that is, could be at the end. Yes, there it is, the last page.
It's from Marquese Kuka.
So one of the four has a vehicle in their name, but I don't know whether that's a shared vehicle, and, you know, so it's plausible.
Yeah, I mean, what what should they do if they all use the same vehicle, and it's in one person's name, not their own?
The regulations are set up, because usually it's a one-to-one correspondence, but this is a different situation.
Yeah.
And to say that you can't be a commercial shellfisher person, if you will, without owning your own vehicle is not really true, if you have arranged for other
Somebody else.
Transportation.
Yeah.
And did they provide their census?
No.
No.
No, none of them did.
My feeling on this is, these are just so incomplete, and trying to piece these together, I'm more comfortable sending these four back for complete packets. And in for me, a complete packet would be that they should provide a tax, at least a tax bill and a registration for each packet, so that
But if they're renting, they don't have a tax bill.
Well, they did provide a tax bill with the son-in-law's name. I mean, but they're renters, so it's not really relevant. It just shows the address. It the registration shows the same address as the tax bill. So we need
What you're saying is, each person should come back and do as complete a job as they can with the proper fee, and it will come back before
Yeah.
The board, which means these people have to wait until April 22nd at a minimum. That's what it means.
Yeah.
And equally, at this point, they shouldn't even be clamming.
No, same. They should have to continue to wait from April 1st to April 22nd, whereas the other people tonight, as long as they come in right away, they can clam right away.
Right.
That's the difference.
Yeah, no, I get that.
And the census and all the proper fees and
These are just so incomplete. I mean, if there was, like, the ones with the census, we were able to give a pass, because we all felt that we that's fine, but these the fees are wrong, the registrations are missing, the census is missing, there's no lease.
For something that's missing, they need to, I guess, explain, "I don't have a vehicle. I use this vehicle," but it just came in as a block, and it's harder to understand.
Figure it out, yeah. Okay.
If you have a different opinion, I'm happy to hear it. I
I don't mind. I mean, doing that, let them
So but who would they come in and talk to Pam? Would they go in and talk to
Well, they would go talk to Marie, but Marie's tomorrow's Marie's last day, so that it would be
They'll end up up in our office, and I will sit down with them.
Okay.
Say, "Look, you need these things." And until they produce something that's the board can make sense of. But I will tell them, "Sorry, you can you have to continue not clamming."
Is there any way we can vote that when they do provide the information, enough information that Brendan feels comfortable, they can start clamming?
Sure, we can just take a motion to do to require all of these things and then let them do it, if that's what you're comfortable with.
And that's pretty much the same as the other people.
As the other people.
Because we're going to check that anyway. Same thing.
Yeah, I mean, if they they can, then they can come in tomorrow if they want, or they don't. They come in after the next selectmen's meeting, whatever they want to do, you know, however urgent it is.
So you're treating them like, under that proposal, you're treating them like everyone else that you talked about tonight, except for the fact they have a lot more ground to cover.
Right.
Right. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024 commercial shellfish permit applications for Voglesh Kuka, Labay Kuka, Dennis Kuka, Marquese Kuka, contingent upon receiving a better lease agreement for each of them, proper payment for each of them.
Census.
A census for each of them, and a registration or a letter explaining the lack thereof for each of them. And each packet for each applicant must be complete on its own merit.
And when you talk about a lease, are you talking about a letter from the owner of the house to each of about each of them, or do you look you're looking for a lease?
I
You can waive it, but it's up to you what you're looking for.
I mean, I don't feel that they have a lease, or we probably wouldn't have received a letter, but they've grouped all of these people into one letter of one sentence. I think that they should be individualized for each person, if we're not going to if we're going to accept a letter as their lease agreement.
Or at least include include a letter with that same letter with each one.
Sure. I mean, if that's
Right, and say, "Here's my package. Here's my package." Right, and that's not what was done, so.
Right.
I think we can straighten it up.
And all names are on that letter?
Yeah, I'll pass you this packet if you guys want to look at all those applications.
Yeah, so
And in that motion, we'll say that as soon as Town Administrator Zubroki feels that those packets are complete, he can release the license, and they can continue clamming without delay.
Yeah.
And on all of these, you've you've signed the previous ones tonight. Have you are you going to pre-sign these?
I'll sign them, so that we don't have to commit.
We should do that.
Because you're going to hold them until you get the documents.
Yeah, they're not going to be
They don't need to submit. All of them are the the actual application is
The application form is here.
It's sufficient. It's not like they're going to need to fill out a new one.
No, no, it's just us making sure that
It's the additional information. Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we'll sign those. So oh, so I entertain a motion. Peter, do you want to move that with all the contingencies?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment this evening?
Town town clerk discussion, town accountant discussion? That was another
Did I miss it?
I know you did miss it. I was wondering why, because I completely messed up.
It's
Top of the second page.
Last page.
Top of the next page.
Oh.
So I have the the board at your special meeting last week authorized me to engage with one of the applicants for town accountant, to start determining whether her requirements were something that seemed to at least at at first analysis would work out for the town. That was not an offer of employment. No offer has been made. In that engagement, which I undertook, I feel that the applicant is going to request things that are well within reason, and my recommendation at this point would be to potentially have the board authorize a contingent offer. That contingent offer would have to carry the fact that it would require the successful negotiation of an employment contract that was acceptable to the board, as well as the standard Corey, Corey check and the drug and medical screen. All of the salary, the benefits, et cetera, that all gets carried in that, you know, contingent on a on an employment contract that's acceptable to the board, because all of those things are contained within that contract. So it would be going to the next step, saying, here is now, right now, we're at no offer of employment. We're moving toward potentially a contingent offer of employment.
Right.
If you're comfortable doing that, I think I can get that set up, so that you could have an executive session about it at your next meeting, at least to start looking at.
So my question is, it was the strong recommendation of the current town accountant and the vice chair of the Finance Committee that we engage with Ms. Nolan. Have you run any of this discussion past that meeting, past Chuck Benevento?
I did. I had a discussion with him in the office after the selectmen's meeting, different day, and he really said, you know, I looked at her background, her her experience, and the way she answered the questions, and he really feels like she will be able to rise to the challenge, and he agrees that if we put very specific language in the contract about the ability of the town to release the employee if it's just not working out, he feels like it's it's good enough to proceed at this point, again, with contingency.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to engage with Michaela Nolan, to move forward with a full-time town accountant contract contingent upon passing Corey check and medical and drug screening.
Right, and a contract that is acceptable to the board of selectmen, so this would be a contingent offer of employment.
What did we vote the other day? Friday, was it?
Only to allow me to talk to the applicant about what her requirements might be, to make sure it's within the realm of what the town might accept, so that we don't have a gross mismatch.
That's right. Okay. Yep. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment? If there's public comment online, feel free to unmute yourself, say your name and address, and you can speak now. address, and you can speak now.
Hi, it's Annie.
Hi, Annie, how are you?
Good. I hope you can hear me this time.
We can hear you, thank you.
Great. So just some comments. I heard about a number of capital projects you talked about at the beginning of the meeting, at the Grove, tennis courts, public safety building, decorative lights. And I, I said this on Facebook, and I'll say it to you directly. I think that you should consider a facilities director to manage the buildings and capital projects we have going on. I think it's important to have a skilled person who runs those things. I don't know if it's a shared position with Manchester, but, you know, you're representing the town and the taxpayers' dollars, and, you know, this lights thing is a perfect example of why you would need somebody like that. Second thing is, you know, is there a way of improving our grant funding process? We apply for grants, we come, and then we have an ask to the town to meet, meet matching funds or do additional funds. And it's often the case that we actually never approve the project in the first place. So I don't like being asked for money on a project that we've never agreed to embark on. And as terms of the lights, I think we should get rid of all this equipment, try to see if we can get some money for it. I, I would hate to see stuff sit and rot and become obsolete. And then finally, I just wanted to make a request on some financial, kind of where we stand stuff. When we went into the budget process, I heard that we had 10K of Wiggle Room. And then the last FinCom meeting I attended, the FinCom had it down to 105 below the budget cap. So I know that there was a conversation with the police department after that conversation that I heard. So I don't know if that number has changed, but I just want to have confirmation on kind of where we are against the budget when we walked into it, I think in February.
Got it.
And then, pardon?
Sorry, Annie, go ahead, do all your questions. I can answer that, but go ahead and do all your questions.
Yep. And then, I know that Chuck Benevento had mentioned what estimated new growth for 2024 was. It was very hard to hear him on the phone during that FinCom meeting, but I thought it was north of 150K, but I can't be sure. So I just wanted to know where he had estimated new growth coming in for 2024. And also, at the Fall Town meeting, we had a really nice list of the balances in the reserve budgets, and I would love to see that. So those are just three numbers I would love to get from you guys. And then finally, I, I do think there's a, there's an opportunity for a conversation with taxpayers about budgeting. You know, we aren't budgeting for new growth. We're sweeping it into, into free cash, and then using it in capital expenses. And I, I wonder when we are in financial straits, why we don't do, account for new growth in budgeting. I know we're traditionally very conservative, but, you know, I, I think taxpayers have a right to decide whether they want their taxpayers to go for operational expenditures in the year that they're paying them, and rather than be swept into a savings account for the town where their money sits in a reserve account, when actually it could be working in their own reserve accounts. So I just think that's a conversation that's worth having. So those are my comments. You don't have to answer them now, but I just wanted to, just got kind of right the ship on where I am with those numbers. Thanks.
Thanks, Annie. The one that I want to answer, because I have the number off the top of my head, when you mentioned north of 110,000 when we left the finance committee meeting, after the meeting was had with the chief of police and everything washed out, we're at $39,000 in the black. That is the final number. And then my second question, I'm gonna ask a question back of you. When you talk about a facilities director in projects for grants that we've gone after, but we, and we voted for at town meeting, but haven't actually done the project, other than the streetlight, which we're obviously in the midst of dealing with that, what other projects have we voted to fund that we haven't actually executed?
Well, I do remember that, do you remember Brendan, the, it was a walkway, a wooden walkway. Remember, we were doing some grants? That was years ago.
So we got a grant to do a feasibility study for a kind of a river walk. It was $55,000. That feasibility study got done, and it was decided not to go forward with the project. But there was actually not any money approved for construction. It was just for a study. And the study's on the website.
Yeah. And I can just remember going to those meetings and thinking, "Wait a minute." You know, just because we have a grant doesn't mean we should
Well, no. And town meeting would have, if, let's say that the town wanted that to go forward after the study, that would have to have been brought to town meeting for construction funding and design money, and it wasn't. So town meeting did not approve anything with respect to design or construction. True, the executive branch, the Board of Selectmen, is allowed to apply for grants without town meeting approval, and that's an example of one. But that was a grant for a study, and a study was done. I also wanted to comment, go ahead, Annie, sorry.
No, I just, you know, I think you and I kind of went back and forth on that river walk thing, because you said at the time, "Yeah, well, the funding, the funding votes are kind of the approval." And, you know, I get it, but I don't like it. So I just think that if we're gonna commit to a grant project, and I know it's hard, because these grant projects come, you know, off, off-cycle, right? You don't necessarily have a town meeting to be able to approve them. I just think we could improve the process and the communication about it, because, you know, it's not, maybe it's not Essex taxpayer money, but it might be Massachusetts, which we
But what grant, Annie, what grants did we accept that had a failed status beyond what we're working on with the lights? I can't think of any.
Well, I mean, you have the culvert on Apple Street. I mean, I think that that is, you know, something that I think is worthy, right? I, I agree with the project.
Well, those were grants for studies. We completed all the studies. With respect to construction funding, we were, we had actually lined up about $5 million, $4.5 million, $5 million. But without getting the easements, we weren't able to actually get those grants assigned. We had to back off of, of those.
Right. And so please don't think that I'm saying you're all, doing everything wrong. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I hate the fact that we, that you, that we find out about stuff after we've already gotten money and done studies, and it's like, then we look like, you know, we're not
But isn't that the process? You, you do studies to decide? I mean, and Annie, I'm a firm believer that grants need to be looked at better, both in the school system, in the towns, whatever, whenever we're going after a grant, whether it's the police department or the fire, to make sure, is it gonna cost us more money in the end?
Yeah.
And these feasibilities, and you have, you know, a perfect, we have a perfect example with the school coming up. A lot of people don't understand, why do we have to pay for feasibility? But you, it's better than doing nothing.
Right. But here's the issue with the feasibility study for the school. If you, if you do the feasibility study and you decide not to go forward, you're really screwing yourselves over, right? Because you, you have to pull out, and you lose all that money that you put into your feasibility study. So if you're gonna go forward with the feasibility study for schools, you need to make sure that you've got like, that you're gonna stick with it. It's not like, "Oh, we'll pull out," because you'd have to do a whole new feasibility study, right?
Well, I think
In five years.
Right. I think that's why
Ipswich is your bad model, right? So, and the facilities director, I'm not talking about that related to grant process. I'm just saying, we have a lot of property. We have fields. The school district has a facilities director, and that person is busy. And I just, I know that Brendan is the facilities director for some, some of the buildings, but I just, I think that's a lot of responsibility to put on somebody who already has a very full plate. So you don't have to, I'm just asking you to think about it.
Thank you, Annie. We appreciate
I can answer one other question. Annie, you mentioned that new growth is swept into free cash. It doesn't actually work that way. If new growth is not factored into the estimate for what it takes to fund the budget, and it comes in higher, it just means there's more capacity to count on when you start planning the next budget year, because you don't actually assess that in taxes. So it's not, the money doesn't actually come in. What that's saying is, the, the capacity, the ceiling, if you will, for taxation goes up, but if it's not been factored into the budget, it doesn't get taxed. So it doesn't grow free cash. It just grows the capacity for the next budget cycle to potentially handle something that, that is thrown at the town.
Okay.
And then finally
At FinCom.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
And then
That's it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brendan, you can say, Annie, let me finish. I'll let you finish.
It's all right. I've got one other thing that you commented on, but let's finish this topic. You good on that topic?
I'm good on that topic.
And then with the, with the, the funds, the different reserves that the town has, we normally publish that on the handout at town meeting for Fall Town meeting, not at annual town meeting, because we will have, for Fall Town meeting, we're coming right off the certification of free cash. And so we do that then. I can get you that update, but that's why we don't normally offer it on the handout at, at the annual town meeting, because that's, we're waiting for a fiscal year to close out and provide a new balance. But I'll get you an update on, on those funds.
Okay, and you should just know that I'm gonna share them.
Yeah, well, it's all, it's gonna be public information from the town accountant, sure.
Right, but it's
Okay.
But Annie, it's equally important to, obviously, you get this, but it's equally important to realize that he's gonna get you the numbers probably first thing tomorrow, and we haven't closed out the fiscal year. So whatever you're seeing are
Yep.
Isn't real.
Isn't real, right. And so we close the books, unless you want him to get you the number, you know, right after the fiscal year closes.
I, I'd like to see it, as of today.
Okay.
I'm just gonna take the chart that we do for the Fall Town meeting, Annie, and I'm gonna get those numbers updated through close of last month. I believe that's as good as we can do.
Yep.
But can I just also ask to that? So these funds, some of them have stipulations on what the money can and cannot be spent on, correct?
Most of them do, yeah.
Yeah.
And that most of them require a town meeting vote to access.
Of two-thirds.
Not necessarily two-thirds.
They're not all stabilization.
Right, and they've recently relaxed
That's right, to a majority.
To a majority vote to get out of a stabilization fund.
That's right.
That's right, yeah.
Didn't they relax those? They relaxed those the day after Fall Town meeting, when I asked to have it moved to
I don't know if it was the day after, but
It was pretty close.
I can tell you that, you know, that is the new rule. But regardless, these, these funds that we're talking about require a town meeting vote to appropriate for a purpose or, or whatever have you. It's not something that the selectmen can just access. In fact, we used to, we used to have the Town Technology Fund, which comes in through surcharges on the cable bill, and that was the, the only fund I can think of that the selectmen could access. And even that changed to where it now needs a town meeting vote.
Is that everything, Annie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else online that would like to make a public comment?
Hey, this is Gil Frieden at 104 John Weisapp. How are you?
Hi, Gil. How are you?
Good.
Good.
I just came to listen, but I heard, I heard what Annie had to say, and I was just thinking, gosh, the senior center would really benefit from having a facilities person. So
Yeah.
This is not the last we hear of creating a facilities person position. I mean, because e- even if, one way to think about it is, it would give Tess a raise, the director of the senior center, if she didn't have to think about all that. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's really easy money. And right now, for the first time I think ever, we do have a volunteer facilities director, and he comes to games with me sometimes. So it's great. He's getting into the building. It's another senior we got in the building. But yeah, facilities, great idea, Annie.
Thanks, Gil.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else with a public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:05 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.